Recording in progress.
Good evening. I appreciate everybody coming to my last 15 minutes of being on city council. So, welcome to the Louisville City Council meeting Tuesday, November the 28th, 2023. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Maloney.
Here.
Councilmember Dickinson.
Here.
Councilmember Fahey.
Here.
Councilmember La Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Hefner.
Here.
Councilmember Kern. Councilmember Lay.
Here.
Thank you very much. The next thing is approval of the agenda. Please note that the city council does not take public comments on first readings of ordinances. We did get a lot of emails today on the first reading. If anyone wants to comment on ordinances 1868 and 1869 related to the fire damaged homes, the chance to do that will be during the second reading on December the 19th. Do I have an approval of the agenda?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. So, I'm gonna, you know, the council knows that I do long speeches, long goodbyes. I just wanted to say a few words before we get into swearing and almost everybody, everybody on the dais is being sworn in. But this is my final council meeting. I wanted to share a few thoughts with my colleagues as well as the city of Louisville. It's been my honor and privilege to serve this community. It's been eight years. I've learned a lot. I've learned to appreciate the city of Louisville even more than I did than I wanted to be on council. And I want to thank my colleagues for entrusting me being the mayor for 2023. That was quite an honor. Louisville is a great city. You know, back in 2011, I think it was the last time, the Money Magazine rated the city of Louisville as the number one small city in the country, and I still think it is. The only difference is our housing prices. My house has tripled over that period of time, not that period, doubled over that period of time. But there's so much going for the city of Louisville. If you look at the open space, we have almost 2,000 vacant areas, acres of open space either in the city or around the city, and 30 some miles of trails. Over 20 parks with playgrounds, world-class rec center, world-class library, iconic downtown, vibrant and varied restaurant scene, many cultural amenities, plenty of them that happen either through the library, the museum, and all sorts of things, and terrific schools. You know, so for me, this really is the number one city, small city in the country. Louisville is also a resilient city and has faced numerous adversities over the last 20 years, including two hailstorms, devastating flood, and of course, the economic downturns, COVID, and then the disastrous Marshall Fire that we had. I looked at the stats today. Close to 60% of the homes are either being rebuilt, occupied, or they're in process, which is really amazing considering we're less than two years out from the fire. And I expect that number to go up to 70%. And the resilience really speaks to the character of this community, and that's something I'm very proud of. The foundation of any great city really has to be the staff who works tirelessly on behalf of the citizens to provide the cleanest water, the safest neighborhoods, and services that are really designed around the expectations of the community. So I thank the staff for their commitment, their expertise, professionalism, and their innovation. The city council agenda for 2024 is loaded, and as our Director of Community Relations knows, we have the comp plan coming, we have the housing plan, and many other things. So it's full of strategic things, and the biggest thing certainly is the comp plan. We'll be looking at a 10 to 20-year view of what the city should look like as far as housing, commercial development, transportation, and most importantly, economic sustainability. And it's a terrific opportunity for the citizens of Louisville to engage in that process because it's an open process. So tonight, we welcome a new mayor and four city councillors who will be all going through their oaths. The city council has the energy, the commitment, and the ability to make clear collaborative decisions, and for that, I think they will serve the city very well. I think I'm leaving the city council as a very strong council sitting around me. Thus, we will proceed to the oath office, and I'd like to invite Honorable Judge David Thrower to come up to the podium. I'm going to change the order a little bit. So first up will be Ward One Counselor, Counselor Caleb Dickinson. He needs to let me know when his dad gets here.
Oh, wait. No, he says we're switching.
You gotta go back there.
All right. Thank you. Ready? Raise your right hand. Repeat after me, sir. I state your name.
I, Caleb Dickinson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The ordinances and the Home Rule Charter of the City of Louisville, Colorado.
The ordinances and the Home Rule Charter of the City of Louisville, Colorado.
And faithfully perform the duties of the Office of City Council.
And faithfully perform the duties of the Office of City Council.
Ward One, upon which I'm about to enter.
Ward One, upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Dave.
Next up, we'll have from Ward Two, Counselor Art Mayor Pro Tem Deb Fahey.
Good evening.
Nice to see you.
Me too.
Step back just a little bit so we can make.
Okay.
Excellent. Ready? Raise your right hand, please. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Deborah Fahey.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The ordinances and the Home Rule Charter of the City of Louisville, Colorado.
The ordinances and the Home Rule Charter of the City of Louisville, Colorado.
And faithfully perform the duties.
And faithfully perform the duties.
Of the Office of City Council, Ward Two.
Of the Office of City Council, Ward Two.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next up, we'll have Counselor Barbara Hamilton from Ward Three.
Right hand, please. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Barbara Hamilton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The ordinances and the Home Rule Charter of the City of Louisville, Colorado.
The ordinances and the Home Rule Charter of the City of Louisville, Colorado.
And faithfully perform the duties of the Office of City Council, Ward Three.
And faithfully perform the duties of the Office of City Council, Ward Three.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next up from Ward Three will be Counselor Dietrich Hefner, and he is on Zoom, so you can see him up on the screen.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
I sure can.
Okay, raise your right hand, please. Please state after I do. I state your name.
I, Dietrich Hefner.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The ordinances and the Home Rule Charter of the City of Louisville, Colorado.
The ordinances and the Home Rule Charter of the City of Louisville, Colorado.
And faithfully perform the duties.
And faithfully perform the duties.
Of the Office of City Council, Ward Three.
Of the Office of City Council, Ward Three.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
We're gonna pause for just a second. We're waiting for Counselor Lay's father to show up.
Okay. And virtual hugs to Dietrich. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You gonna tell some jokes?
Counselor Hamilton would like to tell a few jokes while we wait. Now she's gotten shy. I don't know.
My dad is clearly trying to upstage me here. Now, he's come up from Sterling. And I think they had a stop a little bit ago. Okay, couldn't find parking, but he's on his way up, and my wife is helping him. Thank you for your patience, indulgence.
All right, welcome back to the regular meeting. Next up is Counselor Chris Lay will be sworn in as mayor.
Right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Christopher Lay.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The ordinances and the Home Rule Charter of the City of Louisville, Colorado.
Ordnances and the Home Rule Charter of the City of Louisville, Colorado.
And faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Mayor.
And faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Mayor, upon which I am about to enter. Upon which I am about. Congratulations.
Mayor.
At this point in time, we're gonna take a 15 or 20-minute, we'll decide, break, so that the new mayor can have a cupcake.
Six down, six down, it's like six.
Let's do it.
Let's resume. Thank you for indulging us a little bit. I actually wanna sort of take a point of personal privilege to say just a few words. Everybody knows I'm a man of few words. But I, I thought there, there are a couple of things that are worth, worth saying. I can't believe that once upon a time when I was in college and I took, or was placed in a policy task force about the infrastructure crisis, that all these years later, all of the information and the papers and the research and so forth would be so relevant. And here we are. I wanna thank, first of all, the men, so many people who've, who've helped me to arrive... I want to thank, first of all, so many people who've helped me to arrive here. I don't have time to name everybody, of course, though many of you are here in this room and I do appreciate all of the support and comments and criticisms and challenges. I think they've hopefully prepared me a bit better for what we're going to be doing together. And I very much appreciate that Sherri Summer and Josh Cooperman, who may have had to go, there he is, no, he's there, alright, were here, and others, plenty of others. But I want to thank three people especially. My mom couldn't make the trip from my first hometown, Sterling, Colorado, in the northeast, about two hours away. Ann Marshall Rousseau-Lay is the toughest Sicilian and probably the toughest person I've ever known. She epitomizes the quality that Churchill once sat in of never, 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 never giving up. On me, on my dad, on all of us, on herself. Asked, she was in the hospital earlier this year, and they were doing, as people do sometimes with folks who are on or potentially have some dementia, they were doing orientation, you know, as to time and place and all that stuff. And she got really tired of getting these questions. And my wife had just had, Natalie had just had a conversation with her where she told her that I was running for mayor. And we came in with yet another nurse, and the nurse asked the same question, you know, but she said, you know, "Who pointed to me? Who is that guy there?" And I wasn't in a criminal lineup, so I was kind of happy that it came up in this context rather than some other. But she didn't use my name, but she said, "He's running, he's running for mayor of Lewisville, and he's going to win. He's going to be the best mayor in the whole world." I was like, you know, "Thanks, Mom, for setting the bar so high. My dad is here, and thank you for waiting for him." And I can't even begin to say how appreciative I am of your making the trip. My dad's mom was the first female county clerk and recorder in Sterling, in Logan County. And when Dad came back from, yeah, law school to practice in my hometown, he registered as a Democrat. And that was, you know, a time where everybody had, it was all by hand. And he took a hell, he took a lot of hell for that, for saying he was a Democrat, because that was not the family's background, mostly because of Joseph McCarthy. That's the big reason that he told me that. And it's a big deal to come back and do things. And that was sort of the first thing. But he practiced for many years in Sterling. He was a county commissioner, elected as county commissioner there and re-elected, and then was appointed by Dick Lamb to be trial judge, district judge, in Sterling, and to write a seven-county circuit, which is bigger than a lot of states in the US. And he did that for 26 years. He retired, and he thought he was out, but I pulled him back in. And he, under some, you know, filial duress, co-founded the law firm that we still have, the Lay Law Group, that is 10 years old this year. And I'm forever grateful for his good name and wonderful guidance, and we even had a chance to try a case together, which is fabulous. He taught me rectitude and loyalty, the importance of faith, and a rich interior life. Dad, please forgive me for quoting a country singer, Clint Black, to describe the bedrock of your love for me, your children, your grandchildren, the rest of your family, and for the life of dedicated public service that you have faithfully carried out. There's no request, too big or small, we give ourselves, we give our all. Love isn't someplace that we fall. It's something that we do. And that's you, Dad. Thank you. And then finally, I want to thank my wife, Natalie, who loves me despite myself. She's the rock of the family. She's the wind beneath Attorney General Phil Weiser's wings. For four years, she's overseeing the fight for justice for Elijah McClain, who was killed in Aurora in 2019. She's here, that trial is going on, she's not trying it, she's overseeing it, and she's had a lot to do with shaping it. And I am so, there's very few people that I admire more. She selected another extraordinary lawyer from our community, Shannon Stevenson, to be the lead lawyer in that case. Shannon just lives down Main Street. She's an extraordinary wife, mom to a Californian educator and a New York actor. And there's nobody in the world who loves our Bishan, and I think I get this right, I'm probably going to hear it from the kids if I don't, Matilda Bowie, Angela Merkel, Beyonce, Ruth Bader Ginsburg, Houdini, Lay, the 11 Pounds of Fierce that we usually call Millie. It's tough to grow up with heroes like that, to have one as a law partner, to have one as a life partner, but I really appreciate that. And one final thing that I would say is that as we, I'm going to make a lot of mistakes in this job, and I am pretty good about recognizing them or at least listening to people tell me about them and trying my best to rectify things. But this is a matter of teamwork, this is a team up here. They have different skills and interests, and I am so excited about this job. And I hope, and I bet I'm going to be as excited about it in a year or two, three, as I am now. And you are part of that team too, residents of Lewisville and staff and the others at the dais. And I can't wait to get started. So let's get started. Alright, we are at the point for public comments on items not on the agenda. And I know we have a full agenda, and I'm sorry for starting at seven, but that's what we're going to do tonight. And I appreciate all the indulgence and the celebration, and you're listening to my thanks here. Alright, public comment on items not on the agenda and items on the consent agenda is an opportunity for anyone to speak as to any item that's not on our agenda or on any item on the consent agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes, with the exception that you can pool multiple people to a maximum of six minutes. Please, when you approach the dais, I've got some cards indicating people who would like to speak, identify yourself to us, and if you're a Lewisville resident. Alright, so with that, let's start with, I'm going to get this wrong, but I'm going to get the last name right, I think, I think it's Kuan Wu? Did I get it right remotely? Probably not. Well, what, can, please? If you could.
First of all, congratulations to be a mayor, okay?
Thanks.
And you are the mayor of everybody, not just one that selected you, okay? Alright. One of the things I'm asking about is the agenda item on December 5th meeting regarding Redtail Ridge. And we shouldn't have that meeting because the notification was not properly sent out. It was sent to Superior, not in Lewisville. And I got this message from someone passing this information to me from Superior. And we all know Redtail Ridge is in Lewisville, not in Superior. And I think we should stop this hearing until everybody is notified properly. Thank you.
Thanks. Next. I wanted to know, though, whether I got the pronunciation of your name remotely right, and if I didn't to get it. Okay, thank you. Let's see, Weiyan Chen? Did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay, good. It's very important, people mispronounce my name, and we don't have any excuse for getting that wrong.
You did, good. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor and council members. I was, I'm resident of Lewisville 146 Cherrywood Lane. I was surprisedly given a postcard from my old neighborhood in Superior about the meeting in next Tuesday about Redtail Ridge. As resident of Lewisville, I have a right to know that meeting. I think the meeting cannot be held before we inform the residents of Lewisville. Thank you.
One thing that I didn't say at the beginning is, because the items are not on the agenda, we on council can't speak to them, we can't respond, though we are obviously taking them in and will consider them. We're not being rude up here, we're just being, doing what we need to do. And I appreciate, all the comments are being made. Louis Delaware.
Hi there, I'm resident Lewisville over in the enclave. Three things. Last meeting I was here just before Election Day, brought up the topic about Viapia. Just curious to find out where that's going, next sort of session, meeting, whatever, to discuss that. Would be nice to know, if possible. The next one is about the additional living, next to me, not that, is about use taxes. Had we known that the use taxes were only part of the original permit for rebuilding as a result of the Marshall wildfire, we most likely would have put solar on, we would have probably put landscaping on, other things as well into the fences, into it. It's not like we're doing something new to the house to be able to have them, we're just replacing these items. So it'd be great for city council to consider extending that circumstance to everybody who's having to redo their house entirely. The last thing that I think you all are aware, that Representative Nagus and our two US Senators, Bennett Hickenlooper, petitioned insurance agencies, companies, to be able to consider extending ALE. I think right now, the more the merrier, I would really suggest that city council perhaps do something similar to that in regards to saying, here's what needs to be done to be able to extend this. We're not going to be done in 24 months. We're probably looking at March, April, May of next year, based upon the scarcity of labor. But I know other people who are just starting to break ground right now, and they know, they need that additional help for another 12 months at most. So it would be a good, good thing for city council to consider putting that out to the insurance companies to be able to get more sway in it. Because again, they don't have to do this, it's a good, good thing for them to do this. So, thank you.
Thanks. Catherine Smith.
Hello. Congratulations to all of you, nice to see familiar faces, new roles for some of you, one of you, and nice to see a new face on city council. I am here tonight to talk a little bit about the legacy and to talk about the December 5th meeting, because I learned today that Redtail Ridge will be on the agenda for that meeting. I'm here to speak for the people who do vote, the people who don't vote, and for the plants, the animals, the microorganisms, the ecosystems of our city. I've got a number of points, I'll just go over them quickly. My understanding is, and I've been participating in the Northwest Tollway meetings, that they still haven't come to a decision, which means that the application itself is incomplete and suggests that its consideration here is premature. I urge all of you to read the traffic study. My big concern is that we're bringing gridlock to Lewisville. I really can't overemphasize enough how challenging traffic is becoming in Boulder County and what the traffic study says. I'm concerned that we don't have a plan in place to address it, and the Planning Commission's recommendation to deny the application reflects their agreement that there is not enough being done to address the traffic concerns. In terms of the place itself, the developer is planning to do wholesale grading, grading beyond the area that's going to be immediately developed. And so what we're looking at is destruction, not just of habitat, but obviously of the place where all of these different plants and animals are living, even if it's not being developed. Grasslands are, as I think many of you know, an unappreciated resource, they do play a significant role in carbon sequestration. And lastly, I just hate to see our small town lose its charm. And good luck to you all, I know you have many hard decisions in front of you, and I am happy to have our town so well represented. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Wei-Ha-Ji? Did I get that correct? Okay, thank you.
I just got it.
I just got it. It's a postcard from my neighbor. It's next Monday at December 5th. The meeting cannot be held. Yeah, that's all, yeah.
Thank you.
Hello. Congratulations to everybody. And I have to say, this is in 27 years. This is the first time I've ever walked into Lewisville City Hall. I'm across 88th Street from you in Superior, 500 feet from Redtail Ridge. And so I've always had a very big interest in what happens there, obviously. I'm a stakeholder there. I moved here when it was originally Storage Tech. Many of my good friends worked at Storage Tech. I'm also in the computing science industry. I even tried to get a job there, too. Ended up at N-Car in Boulder working. And I loved Storage Tech. I think Storage Tech was a great campus, honestly. I was sad to see it go. And I think on the Superior side, if the developer had posed something closer to what Storage Tech had been, I think on the Superior side, people wouldn't have gone in such alarm. One thing we're really worried about in the Superior side, because I can tell you, when we get out in the mornings on 88th Street, it's horrific. That bridge is horrific. And I can't imagine, 300 million square feet, that was like the referendum that got turned down. I was like, oh, my God. And, and that lady in the green sweater, I forgot her name, I don't know, I'm not very familiar with Lewisville residents, said gridlock. To be honest with you, a lot of us are worried about that. It's just, the traffic is just horrific, and that's one thing. So I actually went on the website because I was thinking, maybe there was a new application that came in that I wasn't aware of, and I went onto the city website here, which also I've never really done because I've not really much to do with the city of Lewisville. And there was nothing. So I didn't see any new applications from the last one that the referendum turned down. I said, what's changing? I said, why? Is there a public hearing next Monday? And so I looked for the public hearing. I looked at the planning commission website. I couldn't find anything of anything. So I don't really understand why there's a public hearing. And what I'm asking is that until stakeholders and residents of Lewisville are notified better about this, such that you can go on the website and you can see something, you know, to hold off on it. So people can openly discuss, you know, this issue and ideas can come in and, you know, and everybody can get on board a project that, you know, we all think is, is nice.
Good evening. I just wanted to say thanks for all of your service and congratulations to all of you who are newly elected. I just wanted to speak up because I was driving down Empire Road, and many of you have probably seen this before, but I'm newly interested in our open space as I was, got involved in the Yes on 2C campaign. And I saw that there's a property for sale on Empire Road, and I didn't know if you are aware of it, but it's, I have the address, but my phone just cut out. It is 10178 Empire Road in Lafayette, but I'm wondering if it's something that the city would be interested in purchasing or obtaining a conservation easement on because it's adjacent to the Aquarius Open Space. And it looks beautiful.
Josh Cooperman. I live in Lewisville. About one year ago, the Lewisville Sustainability Advisory Board made a recommendation for your 2023 work plan, in particular to phase out the sale and use of gasoline-powered landscaping equipment. I personally was thrilled that the city council decided to put this item on their work plan for this year, albeit as a low priority. And the possible phase-out of gasoline-powered landscaping equipment has, for the whole year, sat at the bottom of the advanced agenda without being scheduled. So on the one hand, my, my comments are a reminder to hopefully schedule that item. I did notice on the most recent advanced agenda that the item is not there at all. In any case. So I thought I'd just take a few minutes to remind you about our recommendation. So we basically made sort of two recommendations. One is to prohibit essentially immediately gasoline-powered leaf blowers. And this was actually pioneered in Colorado, in Aspen, 20 years ago. And more recently, places like Washington, D.C. have phased out such equipment. The second part of our recommendation was to phase out over a few years all other gasoline-powered landscaping, landscaping equipment. And the reasoning is, you know, pretty straightforward. You know, these, this type of equipment produces a lot of air pollution. It produces noise pollution. It produces carbon pollution. And there are now very good electric equivalents for all the equipment. So there's no reason to continue using gasoline-powered equipment. You know, moreover, we live in an area where we are, the ozone levels near ground level are in excess of those allowed by the EPA, and gasoline-powered landscaping equipment actually contributes substantially to those ozone levels. So it's another good reason to phase it out. I know that, you know, phasing out this equipment is not without issues, but I still think that on the whole, it's a, it's a very good idea to go forward with it, and I hope that we can do it soon, perhaps in conjunction with Boulder over the course of the next year.
Sherry Summer, Lewisville. Hey, I want to congratulate all of you. I want to congratulate you, Mary Lay. I want to thank you in advance for all that you will do to represent the citizens of Lewisville faithfully. Thank you. You know, it's, I also just really want to, I want to thank the people of Lewisville. I mean, it's really wonderful that a person could lose an election and yet come out feeling like I've won so much. We really have wonderful residents here, and my team and I knocked on every door. We went to farmer's markets, the Eclipse. We went to so many events, and we accosted strangers on the street. And you know what? People are wonderful. And so I feel like I've come out way ahead of where I started. So thank you, residents. You are fantastic. You know what else was very, it was a valuable experience also because I talked to so many people. And so it was kind of a polling, a way to poll people and see where they're at. And I've got some really good news. People really love this town. Like, if you look at our vision statement, it's, oh, and I pooled my time with somebody, by the way. Dedicated to providing a vibrant, healthy community with the best small-town atmosphere. We have succeeded, according to 99% of the residents. People love this town. I mean, it was so amazing. They would say, I love everything about this town. I love it so much. There's nothing I don't love. I mean, that was the norm. So that's pretty amazing. It'd be really impossible to, to reach that marker if you tried. They love the activities that are being put on. They love the activities. They love that it's easy to get around. They love the community, and I think that's linked to the size because, you know, you have the smaller size, you can really run into people you know and feel connected. And they love the open space and trails and everything about it. And so that's what they love. I also want to talk about what their concerns are. People are concerned about economic vitality foremost. And I took the opportunity to kind of educate a little bit by saying, you know, the city can't do everything. You know, there's, we can't control the rents, you know, we don't want to set the expectations in an unrealistic way. And I talked about some of the vacancies that have been filled on the McChaslin Corridor, and I talked about how the LRC and the city are really determined to work on economic vitality. And I went to an LRC meeting, and I see that's true. So good job. That's really important to all of us. It's really important to me. They were concerned about affordable, affordable housing less, but also a big concern, fire mitigation and fire hardening. And one of the also biggest things that they were concerned about was, they said, we don't want to be like Boulder. Like, I cannot tell you how many people said that. It's too big. It's impersonal. It doesn't feel safe. I move from there. And so I think this gives us a pretty good idea of what we should be working on, frankly. We need to preserve what people love because that's what, who, we're representing people, and they love this place. So we need to be creative. We can't just have cookie-cutter solutions and say, yes, 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 or, or we'll do what they did. Because we really have to be creative, and I know you're all very smart, and we have really smart residents, and I know we can do this. So I'd like to do a little segue here to, you know, the honeymoon's over, guys. Sorry. But I do want to talk about the Redtail Ridge item on the agenda, and I want to talk about my father, too. I, as Chris does admire his dad, I did admire my father very much. And what he taught me was, the beginning of something is the most important part. Like, you have to take your time. You have to set it up correctly. And I think with such a packed agenda as you have, it's important to set things up correctly. And in my opinion, the most important thing is trust. We need to have trust if we want to tackle so much. And I'm not, I feel like the way this is, on this agenda, so quickly does not feel trust, like it's a trust-building situation to me. And I'll tell you why. The announcement was in the December 19th paper, a little small box. So I guess you have to read the paper constantly to find it. If someone did find it or someone got a postcard, well, then they could connect to the link, which hasn't been updated with an, with a, with a current application. The last one was submitted in April 2021, so we don't really know what it is. So if we had just been paying, you know, just going about our business and thinking life was normal, we would have come on Friday and seen, oh, in three days, we're going to have a preliminary hearing on this. And I called Joel Mengers, who's the managing administrator for the Northwest Parkway. He said, it will take a few weeks to get the negotiations done. This is not a complete application. We were told by our planning director, and I believe he was saying this because it's part of our code, that you need to consider full applications, especially in a case like this that has had such a big, big weight on our town for so long. I mean, it seems like kind of a minimum, that it would be complete, that it would have met all the requirements. I would like, and, and tonight you all swore, swore an oath to uphold our code. As you may or may not know, our planning commission recommended denial because of not meeting the code, our municipal code, and yet we're rushing into something that's not complete, that we got a big red light on, that we're not forced to put on the agenda. I would really like to politely request that this be saved until it is ready for, for review. Thank you very much.
We have several folks on Zoom who I would like to speak. I guess the first one is David Sweetler. David, are you there?
I just unmuted. Can you hear me?
Can now. Can you tell us, are you from Lewisville or tell us where, what?
Yes, I'm a resident of Lewisville for 30 years plus, currently residing in Longmont while we rebuild at 956 St. Andrews Lane. And I essentially heard about this meeting through a friend who asked me if I knew anything about it. So really, my comment is, much like many other people commenting, that we postponed the meeting to give the residents of Lewisville a chance to review the updated filing and the plans that, for Redtail Ridge. And, and that's really all I have to say, is that I definitely would like to have more time and more information available, which would probably take sometime after the December 5th meeting that's originally when it was tabled. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Stephanie Rowe. Stephanie, are you there?
Okay, yeah, sorry. There's a number of buttons to click here. Am I on?
You are.
Okay. So Redtail Ridge, again. I just wanted to add, I think, I think the other speakers have raised a number of good points, and, and I just wanted to add that I, I'm concerned that city council, I think this will be their third time, maybe, fourth time, hearing this, this application, and it still isn't complete. And it seems to me that you should only be hearing complete applications because how can you make an informed decision if the application isn't, doesn't have everything it needs, right? So I know that there, the Northwest Parkway study is, or recommendation is, is still outstanding. And my understanding is also that the tree survey of the property is still missing and the migratory bird study is still missing. And for a proposal that wants to grade the entire site or most of the site, which would involve destroying all of those trees and all of that wildlife habitat, I, I feel like before city council can properly evaluate that, that request, you know, it needs to know what's at stake there and, and what kinds of trees and where they are and what the wildlife is and all of that. So I could be wrong. I, I only heard about this a few hours ago, so I, I haven't had time to, to look into this too carefully, but this is my, so forgive me if I am, but based on such short notice, this is, this is my understanding. So that's it. I think that the town needs to be notified of this properly. Obviously, this is a flashpoint. People have strong feelings in Lewisville about this, and, and we wouldn't want to be, you know, just slipping it in under the radar. And I, I think you need to have a full application before you can really do anything. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Lisa Hughes is up next. Lisa, are you?
Yeah. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I would just like to echo what Louis Delaware said earlier regarding the possibility of Lewisville looking into rebating use tax for fences and solar panels. We already are paying, you know, another permit fee for those, and it would be really helpful because we obviously, like you said, didn't include them in our building permits because we didn't think at the time we would be paying use tax on those either. Also, I want to echo what he said. I'm a resident of the Cornerstone neighborhood in Via, on Via Appia, and our subdivision is the only one, I believe, at least in, in Lewisville or for sure on Via Appia, that has one way in and one way out, and that's straight on to Via Appia. And we are very concerned about the diet on Via Appia that may or may not happen, and I know that's been tabled for another time, but it would be really helpful, as he said, if we could know when that's going to be held and if we, as residents along Via Appia, could be involved in that process because it's already extremely difficult to turn left out of our subdivision. It's also extremely difficult to turn left out of the rec center as well as at Pine and Via Appia. And reducing that down to one lane will only make it more difficult, especially for the 70 Marshall Fire rebuilding houses in my neighborhood, in addition to all the construction traffic that's going in and out of there every day. So those are the two things I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments on items not on the agenda? I don't see any online. Thank you for all the comments. As I said, we can't respond to them at this time, but we're going to take them in and consider them outside of the meeting. Staff will consider them as well as. And staff will consider them, as well as the rest of us. All right, consent agenda. Does anyone have any changes to the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
And I should say, let me, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
As amended?
How is it amended?
No, never mind.
It's okay.
There's a motion on the table, I think it's been seconded.
Second.
I mean, you take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? All right. Council, informational comments on pertinent items not on the agenda. Council members have any pertinent items not on the agenda that they'd like to report now? Seeing none. City managers report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick update for council and the community. Appreciate everyone's patience with the Old Town Skate. As you know, we have transitioned this year from the contractor that had been doing this for many years, for a number of reasons that I don't need to go into right now, I don't think. But it's been a bit challenging having a new contractor. We've learned some things along the way, like, for example, the power, the power source to the chiller wasn't adequate to serve the chiller, which is the most recent delay, so that's a life safety thing, so we wanted to make sure we do that right. So that has set us back a little bit. That's, that's really what's holding us up right now. We've sent out some communications on this. We are making good progress now, I don't want to promise any dates. I'm hopeful that we'll be open by Friday, but we're still working through some other challenges. And who knows what might come up next. So I just wanted to let you know, we're working diligently on this. Our events and recreation and economic vitality staff are working closely with a contractor who's putting this together. So if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me. Thank you.
Thanks. Any question for the city manager? Regular citizens. First item we have is election of the mayor pro tem. Just a brief word about this next piece. And I think council members know this, but sometimes it's, it's a little confusing what we do up here. And whenever something is Latin, it's just automatically kind of confusing. But when the mayor is not able to, or absent, or has to leave because there's a conflict of interest, or anything like that, there needs to be somebody else who runs the meeting. And that is the mayor pro tem. And it's, you know, as I've described, and others have described, it's not a vice mayor, or something like that. It is, but it is a very important function. And, you know, I, I may be gone, and there will be opportunities, you know, for that to happen. The other thing that the mayor pro tem does, though, is the mayor pro tem goes to meetings to help fashion the agenda that, you know, you see tonight, and talk about the advanced agenda, and what things are coming up in the future, and so forth. And so, that is a, it's a decision, that is, who the mayor pro tem is, it's not a mayor's decision, it's a council decision. And so, that's the next item we're going to deal with. And I guess the first question is whether we have any nominations from the floor for mayor pro tem? Yes? Councilmen?
Thank you, yes. As a current, I guess, mayor pro tem, I agree with what Mayor Lay has just said. It's a very important position, useful position, interesting position. And I would like to nominate Caleb Dickinson to be our mayor pro tem for the next year.
Second.
Are there other nominations from the council? Seeing none. I guess we need a vote on that, don't we? Voice vote, okay. All in favor of Caleb Dickinson becoming the next?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem? All right. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And did you see the mantle magically pass? Actually, I did receive a comment today, which I'll pass on, that's sort of an interesting kind of comment, that under our charter, the mayor pro tem is like this springing position. It springs when, when there's no mayor to run the meeting. And it kind of goes away when it, when the need for the mayor pro tem in the meeting goes away. I don't know that that makes any difference to what we have done tonight. And I certainly intend, as I think is custom, to have the mayor pro tem involved in these meetings concerning the agenda. And I'm really looking forward to working with him generally, as I am interested in working with the rest of you, so.
Thanks. The only thing I would ask of my colleagues is that Caleb or Councilmember Dickinson's fine. And if the mayor is absent, and I am filling in, then you can call me Mayor Pro Tem for that moment. Otherwise, Councilmember Dickinson's fine, Caleb's fine. But I don't think I'm the mayor pro tem unless you're actually not here, really. I'm, I'm a mayor for a term, a time period, only when you're gone. So I think we can all relax around titles, and we can be enjoying our equality.
I think you, I think you've probably heard from the same person than I did. And I really, at any rate, I think some of this is formality. I certainly am happy to move forward under the basis that we just talked about. All right. So, the next item on the agenda is 1045 Front Street Historic Landmark and Preservation Grant, Resolution Number 73, Series 2023, a resolution approving landmark designation for a historical residential property located at 1045 Front Street, as well as Resolution Number 73, Series 2023, a resolution approving a preservation and restoration grant for the DeSantis House at 1045 Front Street. Does anyone in council have any disclosures to make? And that's a time when if somebody has some interest that they need to disclose under the rules, so give a chance for people to do that before we start the hearing. And I'm going to open the public hearing, start with the staff presentation. Take it away.
All right, thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you, council members. All right, so yes, this is a landmark and grant request for 1045 Front Street. And I'm actually going to pause a moment and pull up my notes. Okay, perfect. So, I'm going to talk a little bit holistically about this property. HPC did recommend this for landmarking, looking at the architectural and social significance. This structure was built in 1905. And up on the screen, you have 1948 assessor's photo, and then a current photo from this year. And I also want to note that this is on the corner of Front and Short Streets, so it does have sort of a prominent visually accessible location. And it maintains actually almost the exact same form as when it was built over 120 years ago. There are some external changes that are described in more detail in your staff report, the siding and the windows, and the front porch mainly. But really, we're looking at, at the same, same house, for the most part. And that simple vernacular, wood frame house, is, really actually tells the story of its social significance. The origin of this house is first owned by miners. You read much more in much greater detail, much greater eloquence that I can put about that history, but that's kind of where this starts. And then over, the course of over a century, it was owned by the same family, and eventually was passed down from mother to daughter, and kind of ended up being in the same family over time, the DeSantis family name overall, even though the name changed a little bit, largely because it was women who owned it. And so I just wanted to make that connection between the simplistic form of the house and its history. It's really telling that story. I also wanted to note that, you know, from, we have a lot of connections to mining history, which is, which is important for Lewisville. And in this particular instance, one of the DeSantis family members actually died in the Monarch Mine explosion of 1936, which is, of course, a tragic occurrence, but definitely is also something that, you know, this house adds another layer of our understanding of the mining history, not only that it was an important economic force, but also, of course, it was a, it was a dangerous activity to engage with. So, those are a number of the many, just the highlights of the, of the very interesting history here. And then based on that architectural and social significance, and the connection between the two, the HPC recommended approval of this for landmarking, and also staff recommends that as well. And then the second request is actually for a grant. So, the few things that we do as staff every time, we check for the historic structure assessment and make sure that all of the work is either in that assessment, or is somehow otherwise documented as necessary. So all of the work that's requested here was mentioned and described in greater detail in the assessment. It also relates to preservation, restoration, or rehabilitation. So it does meet the criteria of meeting, you know, the, the standard grant amount. I do want to note, there's a discrepancy between what was originally asked for, and then what was requested. I can get a little bit more into that if you have questions, but it relates to what qualifies as extraordinary circumstances and what doesn't. So first, I just wanted to cover that, you know, this is, all qualifies for the basic criteria. And of course, the actual request, as you might note, is a bit more than $40,000. It's $132,000, and that would be matching, of course. So the actual project cost is well over $300,000. And that's where we bring in the extraordinary circumstances criteria. And so I can, I'd spend a little bit more time and happy to answer further questions if you have them, but have the criteria up on the screen. And this is from Resolution 17, Series 2019, that outlines, you know, how the grants, grant program will work. And there's a line in here where, you know, the staff really relies on to kind of help us with the criteria. So it says, you know, extraordinary circumstances is a showing relating to building size, condition, architectural details, or other unique condition compared to similar Lewisville properties. So as you can see, that is generally somewhat broad language. What we try to do is make sure that it relates to one of those categories, and that it's somewhat comparable to what the typical project request would be. So we went through and looked at the foundation, the siding wall, the siding wall structure and insulation, so all of the work that goes into the wall, asbestos abatement, and then windows. We went through each one of those and tried to see, you know, does it relate to something related to extraordinary circumstances? And staff finds that this all does relate to extraordinary circumstances. I'll give you the, the highlights here. The foundation is more or less a full foundation repair. It's not just a corner, which is something that was maybe a little more typical. So that might meet the, the condition of the foundation as extraordinary circumstances. And then, excuse me, when it comes to the siding and the asbestos as well, it's kind of wrapped up into that, and the windows, those all relate to the ability of the project to bring back the house to the way that it looked in the early 20th century. Right now, there's sort of mid-century siding and window updates. And because, in particular with this property, the, the restoration is all the way around the house, pretty much. And that would mean two street-facing sides. That staff finds this meets extraordinary circumstances, those are worthy architectural details to be, to be funded and to have a request for funding. Want to note that there are two letters of support that were provided to you all before today, just sort of general support from neighbors who cited their familiarity with the DeSantis family and the project, and that they were in support of the request. So with that, staff is recommending approval of Resolution 72, which is the resolution to approve the landmark and name it for the DeSantis House. And then Resolution 73, which is the grant for $132,000 toward the preservation, restoration. Again, that would be matching and through reimbursement process. Happy to answer any questions that you have, and the applicant is also here.
Public comment first. Speakers limited to three minutes. And I have, let's see, one, one person, Catherine Smith, so Catherine?
Uh, so, here on my part, I'm going to talk about one week.
Ah. I jumped the gun. All right. Are there any comments from the public first? Seeing none. What? Oh, yeah, thank you. Is there any application or presentation from the applicant?
I mostly just wanted to be here for questions, and I'll keep it short, but I just wanted to say how excited we are to save Dory's house. We've really fallen in love with the property. I mean, the staff presentation was amazing, but it's been in her family for a really long time. All the neighbors are really excited. She's been driving by and checking out what we're doing, and very excited about our paint color choices. And we'd just really like to keep this house in Lewisville and for another 118 more, who knows, years. Yeah, it's a great family, a great neighborhood, and we're really excited. So I just wanted to add that real quick.
Hold on for a second. Do members of council have any questions for the applicant? Or staff?
Trip.
Please.
Amelia, would this be the largest residential grant that we've seen to date?
I believe that the, the church, the Baptist church was larger.
Okay.
And there also was one last year, 612 Jefferson, that I don't remember the exact amount, but was in the neighborhood of this. It was for maybe a slightly smaller footprint of a house.
Yeah. And then, just for public record, how, you know, how do you go about making sure, you know, you don't write a check for $132,000? How do you go about making sure that that money is being used as they're planning on using, or saying they're going to use it? What are the, what are the checkpoints there?
Yeah, absolutely. So, when this approved tonight, you know, I'd follow up with the applicant and say, you know, you've been approved for this amount, give you the reimbursement process. They're also, we've talked about it ahead of time, so they're aware of what the process looks like. They submit actual receipts that say, you know, this is, they're itemized receipts, right? We have to send this to the finance department, they want as much detail as possible. So we look at those, make sure that it relates to anything that's in the Exhibit A. So the resolution that you all signed tonight has an exhibit saying this is what's allowed to be done. And so we'll look at that and say, okay, for example, windows, right? So there is a little bit more detail on the windows than it's just in the resolution. I look at that, I compare it to the receipt, I showed that the receipt was paid. That's the process. The other thing to know is that if you request, you know, a $10,000 grant, but your, but your project actually only maxes out at $5,000, then your reimbursement is $2,500. So this is the max amount. And I would say, from what I've seen so far, most often people do max out the amount, right? It's expensive to build. But that it's, it's not, like you said, it's not a check, it's a reimbursement. So it's based on half of what you actually spend.
Okay. And then, I'm sorry, are you the owner, the builder? What was the relation to the property?
Oh, yeah, I'm the, I'm the owner.
Owner, great. And I just want to make sure you're aware of the tax implications of the $132,000 grant, that it's actually income for you, and that there's a tax burden there, and so that you're prepared for that. And there's lots of resources for tax credits and other things when you're doing historic preservation, but not to be shocked by the government being like, oh, well, you got an extra $132,000 this year. We'd like some of that. So I want to make sure you understand that part of the process, and you can work with our expert staff on some of those details. But one of the very cool things is there's state tax and, and income tax, well, I don't know if income tax, anyway, yeah, there's, anyways, there are rebates and refunds available for doing the really cool work of historic preservation. So they kind of go hand in hand, you get taxed, but you can also get tax benefit. So, yeah.
Yeah, Amelia's been really helpful in answering a million, a million questions.
A million questions, yeah.
Yeah. Awesome, thank you.
I think that's all I have for questions, Chris.
Thank you. Other questions from council? Please.
I'd just like to, to make a brief comment. Thank you for committing to do this. It is no small task. As someone who did historic preservation on their own home, it is a lot of work. And I am grateful that you are preserving what we have here in this community. I love that this house, this home, I should say, was passed down through so many generations. And I want to acknowledge And I want to acknowledge the history of female owners of that house, probably during a time where that wasn't very common. And I'm so happy to see another strong female owner putting in the effort to restore and continue this great house being in our community. So thank you for that and thank you as always for a great presentation.
Um, other questions, comments? Okay. Um, I don't have anything to add, so is there a motion?
Sure. I move that we pass resolution, uh, number 72, series 2023, a resolution approving a landmark designation for historic residential property located at 1045 Front Street.
Second.
Okay. Um, let's take a roll call vote.
Would you like to close the public hearing?
I probably ought to do that. Closing the public hearing.
Councilmember Fahy.
Now, should I, should we redo the motion? Okay. Motion on the table. Sorry. Uh, motion on the table, um, in a second. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Okay, uh, roll call.
Councilmember Fahy.
Yes.
Councilmember Kern.
Yes.
Mayor Lay.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Dickinson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yes.
Excellent. The resolution passes. Is there a motion on resolution number 73?
Okay. I will move to approve resolution number 73, series 2023, a resolution approving a preservation and restoration grant for the DeSantis house at 1045 Front Street.
Second.
Second.
Um, any discussion on the motion? All right, roll call vote.
Mayor Protam Dickinson.
Yes.
Councilmember Kern.
Yes.
Mayor Lay.
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy.
Yes.
Congratulations and thank you very much. Moving on to, uh, I'm see, resolution number 74, series 2023, a resolution approving a preservation and restoration grant for the Atkins House at 816 McKinley Avenue. Uh, does anyone have any disclosures to make? Okay. Open the public hearing and start with the staff presentation.
All right, thank you for your patience. I don't want to hop up too fast again, so I wanted to wait for you to read the actual item. Um, okay, so yes, this is a preservation restoration grant request for 816 McKinley. This property is already landmarked, um, and you've just gotten, uh, familiar or refamiliarized with extraordinary circumstances. We're going to be talking about them again, but in a slightly different, um, context. So because this structure is already landmarked, it was landmarked in, um, I think 2010, might have been 2011, and it's been over a decade. Um, it's not eligible anymore for any additional grants, um, for, for the sort of standard process, but it is eligible to make requests, um, under extraordinary circumstances. That again is in the resolution 17, series 2019. So what that means is for this, we have to look at the entire request and that it all has to meet extraordinary circumstances criteria. So again, all of the work was request, um, all of the requested work was identified in the HSA and it all relates to this preservation, restoration and rehabilitation. Um, and then also just to show you, you know, the alteration certificate was approved by Historic Preservation Commission last month, but to give you an idea of some of this is going to be restoration work, um, the, the house, uh, from the assessor's photo over there on the left, the way it looks today, and then a rendering of some of the restoration work, um, that is proposed and that was approved, um, through the alteration certificate process, that some of this grant money would support where this approved. So going into extraordinary circumstances here, we've looked at foundation and floor structure, roof structure, siding, trim, soffit and windows, and then the front porch. So in this instance, um, this is yet another one, um, that has a pretty extensive foundation and floor structure work that needs to be done according to the assessment. Um, and then the roof structure is sort of interesting. So the second story is a living space and it needs to be rehabilitated according to the assessment in order to be up to code, um, and to be able to be used that way, um, you know, moving forward in the future. Staff finds that this meets extraordinary circumstances, given that that's actually generally larger than most homes, um, that are of this age, don't actually have a second story. And so that additional cost to rehabilitate that, um, would qualify for extraordinary circumstances based on the size and then also condition. And then the last two are related more to the architectural, um, elements and the restoration of some of those elements that are currently, um, absent. So using, um, historical photographs, um, and the assessment information, um, and some demolition of the structure, trying to locate, you know, what was, what was there in the past and bring that back. So that's what those last two, um, elements relate to, or those last two requests relate to in terms of architectural elements. So again, happy to answer questions about how this works with extraordinary circumstances. That was staff's review of the request. Um, and then I've left the amount to the end, but the amount of the request is 58,750. And again, this is totally matching, so that is the, the project cost, quite a bit more than that. And then the, um, those are half of what's eligible. So approval of resolution 74, series 2023 would approve that grant of that amount and staff is recommending, um, approval as did HPC last month. Happy to take any questions you have.
Any questions for staff? Um, I, I had a question about the, um, and this is a small question and it's mostly for my, um, yeah, darn it. Excuse me. Let me find where I was. Um, the front porch and door, uh, the request enables the restoration of a front porch that is currently non-existent due to alterations made on the home. Was the, was it detached? How?
Yeah, so.
What is that, what is that exactly do you, do you mean by that piece?
There's kind of two, two parts to the front porch, sort of an, it's sort of an interesting one. So you can see there on the, on the far left is actually open. So a full restoration, like best practice restoration would be to reopen that porch and try to bring it back to the way that it looked earlier. In this case, it's not possible because when they enclosed that porch, they also built in a stairway. And so to open up the porch would be to open up the house. So this is a partial restoration, which you can see through the windows and the, um, on the block, you know, sort of all these different elements. But the part that is a little different is that it's a request for restoring the windows and the door and sort of updating those pieces. So that's, that's where the front porch comes in. It's not a pure restoration, but staff finds it's still supportable from that angle.
Thank you. Um, is the applicant here? Have a.
Yes, I'm sorry, the applicant is here and I'm sure has a presentation.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Andy Johnson? Yes?
Okay. Good evening.
Andy.
Uh, my name's Andy Johnson. I'm with DAJ Design. I'm a Louisville resident. I'm a Louisville business owner in downtown. Um, and I'm very happy to be the architect for this project. I would like to introduce Kevin and Jenny Eld, who are, uh, sitting, uh, behind me. Um, I'll, I'll invite them to come up in a little bit. They are the owners of the property and the new proud owners of this, uh, really special home. So, uh, Mayor, you, you almost got us all off the hook of one of my long-winded presentations. However, I think Amelia saved you all from, um, me going on, which I can do. Um, this is a cool project. Just to elaborate a little bit on the front porch, because this is unique, this is more of a Historic Preservation Commission item of approval, which they did. Um, so as Amelia mentioned, the, the front porch was originally, uh, open and was, as you would expect, an old home to have. However, at some point, we think the eighties could have been earlier, it could have been the forties, they added proper, more proper stairs. And when I say proper, there are some big quotes around proper stairs going up to the second floor, um, that utilized that front porch area. It's Louisville, we're creative about our remodelitis with our homes. Um, so, uh, that front porch cannot be converted back to an open porch and it's okay. So here's our intent. We're going to take that front porch and we're going to enclose it properly, not the way it is now, but properly with, um, custom-built wood windows that are done to the craft that would have been done at that time and to be more transparent and open as if it were one of those homes that this happened pretty frequently, got enclosed shortly after it was built. We have, I have a presentation with lots of good examples and things like that. I would break Sue Lou's heart if I didn't go through my presentation because she told me a long time ago that if I'm up here, I may as well do it because she wants to hear the architecture, but I am going to spare you. We have a long night. Um, I am here to answer any questions, however, uh, and, um, with that, I would like to invite Kevin and Jenny up if they would like to say a few words about their special home.
Is there any question for Mr. Johnson? Okay.
Hi, how are you? Um, thank you for considering our project. Um, we, uh, were lucky enough to buy, uh, purchase this home back in March of this year. We're, so we're relatively new to Louisville. And we came here to be with family and we fell deeply in love with the town and then we were lucky enough to find this home. Um, our passion really is to, um, preserve this home for long, long into the future, but to do it in a way that pays tribute to its, you know, modest, uh, beginnings. Um, it is a, a wonderful home. It has a wonderful spirit about it, but it needs some help. Um, so we've committed to doing that, but doing it properly, doing it in the right way, so it kind of, uh, it pays tribute to its original design. Um, and we want to live in it for a long, long time, um, and have it be practical, um, to do so. At the moment, it has one bathroom downstairs and when you're upstairs in the middle of the night, it's a long journey. Um, so with Andy's help, I was so happy to be collaborating with him, uh, we think we can, uh, get it right. So, um, we just thank you for, for considering. Jenny?
I think you've pretty much said it all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
Any comment?
Please.
Um, just a quick comment. Kevin and Jenny, welcome to Louisville. It's a wonderful place. We're happy to have you. Um, and I love the solutions that you propose to meet the needs of a modern family, but honor the character and spirit of the home, especially wrapping that, that porch and windows to give the feel of openness, but still accomplish what you need, um, for your family unit here. So I love that solution and you're in great hands with your team. That's all.
Thanks. Any other comments? Yes.
Yeah. Um, I think the comment I'd make is, you know, it's, we don't see this too often where it's already been landmarked and then someone's coming back to do additional work. And, you know, I think we have sort of an incentive program that's often designed to like, please don't destroy the home, here's some money to work on it, right? So this is a little different to say like, oh, the house is already landmarked, you can't destroy it. Um, and so it's a little bit, in my opinion, a little bit more good faith of, um, this is a big project that's super expensive, you're going to spend a lot of money doing it. And we have a preservation fund to help people make these houses amazing and, and, and keep, keep them in our community the way they need to be and, and to keep them up. And so I hope over the next 20, 30 years, we see more and more landmark houses coming back and saying, ooh, we're having some issues, we'd really like to keep this house upright or we need to do this, that, the other. Um, so I think this is really, um, interesting. And then, um, I think it was a, a good point that was made that this has already passed the alteration certificate, right? So we're not up here deciding on this dais whether we like the porch or whether, um, it's acceptable to us. That part's already been approved. Uh, we're here to talk about money, right? And having been on the HPC ourselves, uh, Devin, myself, um, it's important that the HPC is honored in their, like, their process and going through and deciding with all of this information if this is, if this, if this fits and if this is an appropriate way to retrofit, to rest, restore. Um, and so I appreciate the, the hard work that's gone into this moment. And so on the financial piece, you know, if you're willing to spend $200,000, you know, making this home, uh, wonderful and preserving it, I'm, I'm happy that we have a multi-million dollar fund currently. Uh, what is it, three, where, where are we at? Do you know Amelia?
Yeah, about two and a half million.
Two and a half million dollars for projects like that. It's why it's here. Um, so very happy to support this as we move forward.
Comments from council members? Um, my, just a clarification, uh, the, the reason I asked about the front porch and door is, uh, because it's the most expensive of the elements that they're asking for, um, in the grant. Not, not to go over the, I mean, it's interesting to hear about what that, why we're doing that or why we may be doing that as we go forward, but it's the money, as, uh, Council Member Dickinson just said. So, uh, take any public comments? Are there any, it doesn't appear to be any public comments on Zoom? Um, any public comment from chambers? Nope. Um, all right. Council questions and discussion? Yes.
Uh, I just want to add my appreciation for you. Landmarking, I guess that was already done, but, um, to preserve an old structure in Louisville, it maintains the character of the city and that's really important. Um, I, as Caleb said, we were on the HPC together for a few years and it's really heartwarming to see people who are willing to step up and take care of the older structures in town. So thank you.
Uh, other comments? Council comments? All right.
Make motion.
You gotta close the public hearing.
Motion.
Uh, any motion on resolution number 74?
Yep. I move that we approve resolution number 74, series 2023, a resolution approving a preservation restoration grant for the Atkins House at 816 McKinley Avenue.
Second.
Okay. Uh, roll call vote on the resolution.
Councilmember Kern. Councilmember Hamilton.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Dickinson.
Yes.
Mayor Lay.
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy.
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
Thanks.
Congratulations. Right. Pardon me? Yeah, I was gonna ask if anybody wanted to do the break. We customarily take a break at eight. We took a pretty long early one, but let's do it.
Five minutes.
Yeah, no, let's meet back at, at 8:15. Thanks, Councilmember Dickinson, for the TMI.
Hi, Linda, how are you doing? You good? Hanging in there. Trying to find some electricity.
I live in Port Huron.
Yeah, no, it's good.
I don't know why anybody else is.
We need to.
I guess I was with Elizabeth.
Oh.
But I wasn't.
You know, I was.
I think he was.
I mean, no, I just.
You have a question.
Okay.
Which one?
Like, what do you like?
Like, what do you like?
How many terms?
We actually.
Trying to come here already.
The first time.
I mean, I was there like.
I don't think you're not a big.
Not those.
We actually know I love.
Resume with resolution number 75, Series 2023, a resolution approving preliminary subdivision plat, preliminary plan unit development for 15 single-family and 21 townhome units on a 3.6 acre parcel located at 421 533 and 565 East Street. Does anyone on council have any disclosures to make? Okay. We're going to open the public hearing and start with staff presentation.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Lay, members of City Council. I'm Rob Zuccaro, Community Development Director for the city. Going to be presenting tonight, this is actually Planner Ellie Hassan's case, but she's sick, so I'm filling in for her. So I'll do my best to get all the details right. The applicant will have a presentation as well. So with that, this is a preliminary PUD and preliminary plat, so if this is approved, they'll come back with the final PUD and final plat for this development. It is located just kind of on the south side of the commercial core of downtown, just west of Highway 42. As you can see here, it is zoned RM. That residential medium-density zoning, it's intended for, it says in the code, multi-family row homes and townhomes. It also accommodates single-family homes as well. Most of the residential zoning around the commercial core of downtown is RM zones, so it's the same zone district. So again, they are proposing to plat the property into fee simple lots and then several tracts of property around it. I think we've seen quite a few residential developments like this. So if you take the RM zoning and you apply the base standards, you pretty much end up either with an apartment building or maybe a big cul-de-sac with a bunch of single-family homes. So really what we've seen recently are PUDs where they're doing more advanced urban design. So we're getting a mix of housing types with these types of developments as well as kind of narrower streets, more walkable neighborhoods is the intent of doing this rather than the big cul-de-sac or the apartment building. It does require several waivers, which we'll talk about a little bit, and modifications from the standards. But that is the intent of a PUD, is to have more flexible design. So the proposal here is to plat this into 36 lots and eight outlots. The outlots are for some common open space for the residents, drainage roads and alleys for the property. So this is the layout here. Again, there are several modifications to our base standards that, again, are designed more of a, for suburban layout. Again, this is kind of within the downtown area, so I think in staff's analysis, this is much more in keeping with kind of the character of downtown. They are dedicating some right-of-way along East Street, which is the, the kind of frontage road on the east side of the property to accommodate sidewalks. There is a fee and lieu. So this is unplatted property, so anytime this is the first plat and not a replat of a property, they either have to dedicate public land at 15% for residential or fee and lieu. They are requesting the fee and lieu. Staff's supportive of that. They do have private common open space within the development for the residents. It's not really situated well for a larger public open space, so we think fee and lieu could be a good option there. When they come back for final, they will have to vacate one easement, and then, of course, the plat will establish new easements to serve utilities for the development. So here's the layout. They have 21 townhomes in the center, and then on the north and south side, 15 single-family detached homes is what's part of the PUD proposal. Two-story homes with basements, there's two models proposed with the PUD. And with those townhomes, they have quadplexes and triplexes included. Those are three-story with garden-level basements is the proposal. There would be a perimeter fence on the west, north and south sides of the property as well. The PUD includes a landscaping plan for the development. Here's some of the, the green space areas. The, to the left there is the, the kind of common green space for the property, and then they do have some rain garden detention ponds with some enhanced landscaping. So that's a much nicer than your typical detention pond. They've enhanced that with some nicer landscaping. Again, there are several waivers being requested. These are to the standard setbacks, standard lot sizes, so that you can plat those fee simple lots, but in exchange, you have more of the common open space and the private roads and private alleys. It is within the density, so if you just take the gross density, and actually, if you take out the private roads, they're still meeting the RM density with the number of units that they are proposing. So because of that, staff finds the densities within the character of the neighborhood. They are asking for a height waiver. They're asking for, on the row homes, they, they're asking for an allowance of 39 feet. And just for comparison, Clementine, which is a more recent development to the south, they also got a height waiver for 37 and a half feet. So this is slightly higher than Clementine. Part of the consideration is this is kind of closer to the urban, kind of the urban commercial core of downtown, so it transitions in height down to Sunnyside Development, which is south of this, which is a little bit lower, and then the Clementine, which are all row home-type developments. So again, there are, we, when we have subdivisions and the zoning, you have, we're looking at modifications from the subdivision criteria and then waivers from the zoning criteria. I won't go into any of those specifics unless you have questions about any of those, but staff does recommend approval. We're finding that it complies with the subdivision criteria and the zoning criteria with the modification and waivers. I will mention that with all new residential development, as you know, they are required to provide inclusionary housing. So the way our inclusionary housing ordinance is set up is that the baseline standard is that you build 12% of the units on-site to be deed-restricted affordable. We do have an option where the applicant can request to pay a fee and lieu. That is at the discretion of City Council. There are criteria in that, that you need to find if you're going to accept the fee and lieu, which is what the applicant is requesting. It results in potentially more affordable housing, provides a larger benefit to the city than building on-site, and that there are practical difficulties. The applicant has expressed to staff that there are financial difficulties with structuring, how they would finance the project with building on-site versus the fee and lieu. I think in staff's consideration, when you collect fee and lieu, there's potential to take that money and, you know, work with some of the state funding, maybe Prop 1, 2, 3, working with the housing authority, and taking that money and trying to put that into a larger project. So theoretically, that money could be used to build a project with more affordable units, leveraging the money. So those are some of the reasons that council could consider accepting the fee rather than requirement for the building on-site. Staff also reviewed it against the comprehensive plan policies. We find it does support that as well. And with that, staff is recommending approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you would like now before the applicant's presentation.
Are there any specific questions that council members have at the moment? Yes.
I have two questions. One, you said something about a sidewalk. Is that going to be where the existing houses are along the, along the Highway 42 access road?
So the sidewalk that they would be constructing is on the west side of the East Street access road and through here.
So along the railroad tracks?
No, sorry. It's on, so this is East Street. It'd be on the west side of East Street. So the railroad tracks are on the west side of the development.
Okay.
Can you, maybe, I don't know if you can see my cursor. Sorry if I confused that issue. So here's the railroad tracks.
Right.
Over here is East Street, and then there'd be a right-of-way dedication and construction of a sidewalk along the side of the property.
So that's where the existing houses are now.
Yeah, so there are 10, there are 10 existing houses there. Those were, they, I did go through demolition review with HPC as well, and they've released the demolition of those homes. But there are 10 houses on the property right now that would need to be demolished for this project.
And then the other question I have is the access from this development to that access road along Highway 42, and how did, how would they get out onto Highway 42? They have to go all the way up to Pine or?
Sure, yeah. So if you, it's actually off the map here a little bit, but if, if they, if they wanted to go south, they could go down to Lock Street, and there's a light to get onto Highway 42, or they could go up to Pine. So they, they could either go north to get onto Highway 42 or south.
Those are the only two ways out of?
They're the two ways in and out.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from other council members? Yes.
I just have to thank you. Question about the, the height changes and, because right now with those cottages there and the businesses, like where Gravity Brewing is, they're also a lower building, and so we're going to be, they, the little cute houses that are there, they go, there's going to be some single-family. How tall are the single, I mean, it says that they're two-story, but that doesn't have the elevation that, that the duplexes have, correct? Or the townhouses?
Right, yeah. So it looks like the, I'm going to turn this on again here. Oh. So here's, here's the single-family product here, and it looks like we are, I think they're about 29 feet, 29 or 30 feet on this one, and, you know, the applicant can certainly clarify this. It looks like there may be 35 feet approximately on this model, and the applicant can clarify that with their presentation. But I think approximately, that's the height on these models here.
So they're still pretty tall. Okay. The other question I had was about the sidewalk and where it, thanks for starting, but does, where is it going to be connecting to? I mean, is there already sidewalk present that I'm not aware of, and is it, does it give access, you know, all the way up to Pine and connect in? Does it?
Right. So Clementine built a sidewalk. I think there's a, a pretty narrow sidewalk section down, so if you can see here, it's Sunnyside, a couple of properties that aren't included in the development. I think there's a pretty narrow sidewalk that continues up, so they'd be improving the sidewalk connection up to, you know, the, where Gravity Brewing and the commercial properties are up here. So they'd be improving that section.
Okay. And so it won't be anything going south? It'll just, they'll connect up going to the?
Yeah, they, they will only build the sidewalk on their frontage. So that's, oftentimes, these improved sidewalks get built as redevelopment comes in, and we try to improve them just with that frontage.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes.
Can you just help clarify for us the, the process here between preliminary and, and final PUD, like what we're, you know, approving now and what changes could happen between this step in the process and the next step in the process?
Right. Yeah, so our code does require for certain applications to go through a preliminary before you come back for final. So this would not be a, so this PUD wouldn't be the final approval, it wouldn't be a binding approval. You would have to approve the final PUD and the final plat. And basically, I think the applicant has mostly developed those final plans. They're just kind of going through the, the code-required process to get through this first step. And then my understanding is they're ready to come back very quickly for the final PUD and final plat for, for your final approval. So this would just give like the initial nod, like, yes, this is correct, and then their final, or this is the right direction, and then their final PUD and final plat would have to be substantially the same as the preliminary. There might be some tweaks here or there, but substantially, it would need to be the same.
And we, we could potentially request some of those tweaks between the preliminary and the final, or what we're approving today, maybe with conditions. or what we're approving today, maybe with conditions. We can signal desires for, for changes between the preliminary and the final? Or is it likely to be the same? What are, you know, abilities in this, in this meeting to affect the next one?
Yeah, so, so I think your options, if you're, I think you could, you could approve it or of course deny it, or approve with conditions. So if there are conditions that you think are necessary to meet the criteria for a PUD or a plat, and, you know, you, you can include that and amend the, the resolution to include those conditions as conditions of amendments to the plan before they come back for final.
Great. And some questions on the fees in lieu. So the fee in lieu for open space, I don't remember, and I, I couldn't find it quickly. I apologize. But what kind of money are we talking about for the fifteen percent fee in lieu?
Yeah. I don't know if they've done an appraisal yet, but we would get a current appraisal of the property and base it on fifteen percent of that current appraisal. I'll have to defer to the applicant if that estimate has been made yet. I'm not sure. And yes, for the, for the public land.
Okay, and then same thing with the inclusionary housing fee in lieu. You know, my, my scratch paper math says four properties of the thirty-six would have to be affordable. And if they wanted to do fee in lieu, there'd be an amount of money. And we have never, in the city of Louisville, received, is that correct? A fee in lieu for affordable housing at this point?
We have not yet received a fee in lieu since we've had the ordinance for about a year and a half. And the fee is based on square footage. So rather than, so the way the ordinance is written is it's based on square footage of single-family or multifamily.
Not quantity of units. So you take, you take the entire square footage of the thirty-six or thirty-two or thirty-eight, whatever the final thing was, you just, you just take the entire square footage, multiply that by point one-two, and then you put a value on?
No, I think, so I think you take the square footage of all of the different properties. And then there's a per-square-foot value that determines the fee in lieu for all of the units. And I, I can look, if, if you want that, I could look that up and tell you what that per-square-foot is.
Well, I think certainly if, if the applicants are going to, and they can speak to this during their presentation. But if the applicants are going to request a fee in lieu for either of those things, and it looks like they may, understanding, you know, because that, that is something we can deny. And so understanding what that fiscal benefit would be to us. And I know you're talking about we could potentially leverage that with other projects and other things. But trying to understand to just exaggerate, here's two dollars to not put in our affordable housing isn't going to work, right? So trying to understand what that fair calculated fee in lieu is and if that's substantial enough to not get the inclusionary zoning that we so desperately want right now, the affordable housing we so desperately want. So we can talk more about what they're thinking and hoping, but I'm just trying to, trying to get that understanding. But you don't have, we don't, we don't have hard numbers yet to, to make any of those kind of decisions.
Right, and you, and, I mean, really, I think you can make a final decision on this if you wanted to at final PUD and final plat. So if you aren't ready to make a final determination or give them a direction of your preference, you can also ask for more information to come back on final plat and make that final determination.
Thanks, those are my questions. Mayor.
Councilmember Kern.
Thank you. And I'm sorry if I missed this, because I didn't see it and noted it in the pictures. We are building all of these with the net zero. I didn't see solar, like, demonstrated on any of this, especially the single-family homes that are in here?
Yes, they would be subject to our current energy code, which includes the net zero appendices, yep.
And so that'll also apply to the townhouses, not just the single-families?
Yes, I believe so, because the townhomes would be considered single-family product. I believe they're subject to that as well.
Great, and thank you for bringing up the additional affordable housing component. I, and I appreciate the recommendations, because that's my concern too. With the residents who have been living there in the smaller houses that are there, I think a lot of them are renters. And having them displaced from something that is really affordable, especially by what you can find in Louisville, these are people that probably work locally and need affordable housing. They enjoy access using public transportation, walking to goods and services. And I would like for all of us, if it's possible, to take into consideration these people. I realize it's maybe twelve, fifteen individuals. And this is going to provide a lot of wonderful new housing. So thank you. I, I think this is like sentiment of what we want, but I don't want to let, let anybody be left behind, especially some of the most vulnerable members of our community. Thank you.
Any other questions with staff? Does the applicant have a presentation? And I'm going to maybe frame this a little bit, because I, just in the interest of time, I think Rob did a good job of, of describing the project pretty well. But, and there, I don't want to limit you if you have other things to say about that. But I guess I would, based on the comments that we've heard so far, like to hear particularly about the fees in lieu requests early in your presentation, if that's okay?
I'll introduce myself again. Andy Johnson, DAJ Design, Louisville resident, Louisville business owner. I have a planned presentation, mayor, and I'll work through it and guide you through the project as I think that it's best for you to have the best understanding of the project. So I'll do my best to get to those points early. However, I am joined by Paul Norquist from Design Practice, as well as Jesse Truman, who represents the ownership, one of the private owners of the property. I am kind of in a unique position that I, I haven't really been in very often in that I am not the architect of this project. And I've had the great opportunity to have known Jesse and Paul now over the last couple of years. It's unique when two architects are in a room and agree. And we do. And it's really been a lovely process. So, you know, every project, I think, does deserve its own time. So, sorry, I, I, I'll, I'll work through this presentation. I will try to get through as fast I can. As it was mentioned, this, this project is, well, as I mentioned, this has gone on a long time. So if you have ever lived next to any of my custom residential projects, they take a long time. I've done three, and I've done seven Marshall Homes designed and built within the timeframe of this starting and getting to this place. It's been a long process. It feels sometimes a little onerous. We're in the preliminary stage. We have a final presentation for you. So our intent is that we would like to come back with the same presentation. However, we do welcome your feedback. The heavy lifting was done by planning commission. I'm going to make the assumption that you did listen to that recording. It was a lengthy discussion. It was a lively discussion. I think a lot of good topics came up. There was a lot of good dialogue. Historic Preservation Commission has looked at this now three times. Two in public meeting as well as one in a subcommittee, and has released it all three times. The existing homes are of the Louisville stock. They would be ones that would be fun to move, would be fun to find property for them, would be fun, fun to find a new home. They are riddled with asbestos, unfortunately, inside and out. And it's just the byproduct of when they were moved to this site from the mines and how they were addressed when they got moved in terms of being wrapped in kind of a, a new flavor of, of siding and cladding interior and exterior. So with that, obviously, we know where the site is. It is very close to downtown. It is right along Highway forty-two, and it is also bordered by the tracks. And it is very much embedded within the DNA of a lot of our parks, open space, and our access points to all of these great amenities that we have within the town. When you have a project like this and a property this close to downtown, you have the benefit of these shared experiences. And we moved to Louisville, we moved to Old Town for our backyards to be these parks. They are the amenities to all of our properties close into downtown. And I don't want to lose sight of that, because I think it's an important factor. Being an Old Town resident, I have enjoyed that, having also a small property and being able to expand my outdoor experience by these really rich, great parks and rec and open space amenities. Looking at the zoning map of Old Town, this project is right kind of nestled into the CC zoning district, which is that main core of downtown, as we know. It does extend due north, right into the Pine Street Plaza property. But the rest of it is surrounded by the RM zoning district. Now, it's about time we have a little bit of a history lesson around the zoning districts around Old Town. These are our oldest zoning districts. We have a municipal code that's basis is in nineteen sixty-one, I think, had an update in nineteen seventy-two and then nineteen seventy-four, which galvanized our RM and RL zoning districts. These are old districts. These are designed to be very specifically a certain size lot, of which almost half of our Old Town doesn't comply with these zoning districts. It doesn't match the new market demands for housing. It doesn't match how we can actually affect change in our Old Town and our close-in properties that are highly desirable. Not to say it's the most desirable, but it is, you know, it's a core. It's that walkable, you know, environment that I think we are really trying to, to talk about. So I'm not trying to turn my application presentation into a policy debate, but it's really important to know, this RM zoning district, for these types of products, especially when you are looking at a property that is on that other side of the tracks within a, a very different part of Old Town, it's very hard to create a housing product that is appropriate for the area with these old zoning districts. If we were to apply, as, as Director Zakara implied, we would end up with a product like this. We'd have a cul-de-sac, we'd have lots. It would be very uninspiring. These would be bigger homes. They'd be a lot more expensive. And we would still have all the same problems of drainage, figuring out open space. And I think we'd have a very lackluster experience. We don't design, we didn't, we're not showing this to show you like the worst case. This is actually like the best we could do to get lots to actually comply with the zoning district. And it just illustrates that this is not the right product for this site. As Director Zakara mentioned, we are allowed, within the overall area, thirty-seven units. However, we are proposing only thirty-six. Okay, that sounds like a lot. That's a small development, and I want you to keep that in mind, and I'm going to get to that in a second. This project had a history. When it first started, it was actually going to be combined with a redevelopment of Pine Street Plaza. And Pine Street Plaza was going to have a pretty extensive development, as it was being proposed, that included housing, included commercial. It was going to be potentially rezoned to a mixed, mixed-use type of zoning, whether it's mixed-use residential or commercial, probably mixed-use residential. And we had talked about a realignment of East Street. Now, when Jesse bought this property, it was intended to just be this property. However, in discussions, it became really apparent that the better and higher use would be to develop both of these properties at the same time. So Jesse and his partner decided to go through with that and actually redesigned their intent for the project and their product that they wanted to, to introduce to the site. And so there was going to be kind of like a new Main Street, and there was a lot of discussions. It didn't go very far, unfortunately. With Pine Street Plaza, it, they never came to terms on it, and so it went away. And then Jesse and his, his partner were forced back into a different model. So looking at that, early concepts to study the types of housing that wanted to be on the site, the agenda was diversity, different housing products. They did not want to do just apartment buildings. They did not want to do all townhouses. There wanted to be a mix of single-family and, and townhouses, which is unique for a small property like this. And what pretty quickly got discovered is that we could create a product or a site that kind of went like this. It kind of, you know, grew from the sides up to the middle, but was relatively low and porous on the sides. And Paul will talk a little bit more about that, with the core being the taller part of, of the, of the development. So what does this thing do? It, it, it meets a lot of the needs and kind of the, the things that the current comprehensive plan, and I, I imagine the new comprehensive plan will want to talk about. So smaller blocks with lots facing, having street-facing orientations, walkable distance to downtown, that's inherent with the, with the property. It accentuated with, you know, creating the sidewalk, hoping for better connections in the future. And then, more importantly, and I'm glad it was mentioned earlier, creates more rooftops to help support our businesses downtown, which, you know, we needed. And not to mention the American Legion and Gravity and the businesses right next door. And, and in conversation with them, they're pretty excited about having the workers next door. They're pretty excited about having residents and having like a captive audience right next to, right next to their businesses in, in a larger volume. So compatibility is an important discussion when we talk about a development like this. Now, we have had a few properties develop over the last twenty years. Sunnyside would have been one of those early ones. That's seventeen affordable housing units, and that's just directly south of the East, East Street development. And then also east, or south of the East Street development is a more recently approved Clementine project that brought forty-two market-rate housing projects, or housing units, all townhouse project, townhouse units, to the neighborhood. When we started this project, that, the Clementine project was what we were kind of directly and maybe indirectly instructed to kind of really study and look at. And so we did. However, I think East Street does some things different. And I'm not putting any value on whether one development or the other is better or not. They're just different. And the sites and the opportunities around it present themselves differently. So compatibility. What, what I did is I took our site plan and then took Clementine at the exact same scale and compared them side by side. This is important, because this was a very big and important discussion during planning commission, and it revolved around open space. Open space, lowercase o. It's very important to distinguish that. And so with this study, you can see that there is a comparative of unit sizes, you know, when you just look at footprint. But what, what was unique about Clementine that we do not have as an opportunity on East Street that kind of shaped how this development was designed is that Clementine was able to utilize an off-site detention facility within what was dedicated as a city park. That's cool. East Street doesn't get to do that. That detention is at capacity. So we have to handle detention and all stormwater within our own property. And if you look at the size of that detention, it's huge. So as you can see, what's in green, these are those structured detention ponds. They are heavily landscaped. They are enhanced, as Director Zakara mentioned. They're nicer than the, than the typical detention pond, but they are small geographically and deeper by comparison to Clementine. So what does that do? When I take the detention ponds and overlay them onto the Clementine property, they fill the common space that is their open space within the Clementine development. I intentionally did a figure ground study showing the green and then the gray and dark gray for the buildings, and then the, the kind of pink color for the road structure, just to give you a comparison of the infrastructure that was created for Clementine in comparison to East Street. We feel East Street is very efficient. We feel like it has really good street-facing properties, and we're really happy about being able to create that open space, that common space that can be shared by everybody. But what is unique is that every property has their own backyard. And that is unique to- And that is unique to this property that, to this project, that a lot of these other projects did not get to achieve with their products. So to the right, you can see the overall footprint of the different sites overlaid. If we compared this to Sunnyside, it's like, well, what about that? So their detention is their kind of only open space. And it is a shallow detention. It is kind of a grassed area. But it is, it is their detention that they used. So another important thing is our community outreach. So we spent a lot of time reaching out to the neighbors surrounding this property, starting with Pine Street Plaza, which we had already developed a relationship. The owner had his own specific concerns around what East Street would mean for his property specifically. And he has made a number of public comments, I believe you have within your packet, a letter from him. And then we reached out to E-Bike of Colorado, as well as Mr. Kranzey's kind of larger holding of land. Most of Front Street is, are owned by, are all mostly rental properties. There is one owner who was able to be present, and we were able to talk about his concerns. He's right across the tracks, right in this location here. And then, of course, Mr. Lombardi, who lives to the south, now Mr. Lombardi, and kind of his extended family has had ownership of a lot of this property for a very long time and has shared support. So within your packet, we have had a number of letters come in for support of the project. And we have remained in contact with a lot of these neighbors over the time as they've had questions, hosted them at my office. We had a lot of really good discussions. Talked about, talked about the Edge, talked about that discussion of how does this development meet these lower businesses to the north? Those were concerns. Those are valid concerns, particularly the proximity, you know, to these businesses. And I think through a number of ways of demonstrating like how we're trying to be responsible in terms of how the edges do greet the neighbors, we felt like we came to really good degrees of resolution. The neighbor across the street was very concerned about the quality of landscaping, the kind of screening. Currently, there is, there are a lot of trees on this property. They are all volunteers. I did have the opportunity to walk the entire property perimeter and the middle with our city forester, of which he has indicated that none of these trees are ones that we'd ever plant again and are not desirable. So the quality of landscaping was really important. When we presented the planning commission, and this gets back to our housing needs and addressing that topic, we had the opportunity that the, the housing needs assessment had just been, had been recently released and was being presented that night. And it is their final report. I'm going to make the assumption that you've already looked at it. So I'm just going to pull out a few highlights. We have a projected housing needs of almost 2,500 new homes by 2047. Forty-seven percent are in that higher AMI, which equals around 1,100 homes. Thirty-seven percent at that 80% AMI or lower, at 928 homes. What this means is we got to get busy building homes. And if you look at the bar graph below, you know, it, I know that the assumption is that every housing development should be able to do affordable housing. But when you look at the numbers and when you look at how our municipal code was written and how it was adopted, it looks at every housing type as like-for-like. There's no creativity, there's no variation, there's no ability to provide a different housing type within a development that might be different than some of the other market-rate units. And so it makes it incredibly difficult for a developer with a smaller development. And when I say smaller, I'm talking, you know, 100 or 75 or, you know, under 75 units to make this work. And so we adopted our ordinance in 2021. Many of you are on that council. 12% dwelling units shall be affordable. Design and materials equivalent to market-rate units. It's written that simply, without a lot of deviation, without a lot of ability to maneuver or be creative within that. Currently, we actually have no established administration of this inclusionary housing to date. You're going to ask me, what are the numbers? I'm going to say, I don't know. And there's a reason why. It's because we don't have, we don't have the tools in place to do it yet. And it is not a knock on staff. It is not a knock on council. This is a hard topic. This was pushed through, and it has not been revisited. And so the policy discussion, especially with the housing study, is going to be critical this year to create the tools to make some really good informed decisions. When you do, I think what we'll discover is that the fee in lieu is valuable. And I'm not saying it's more valuable. I'm not placing a judgment on this. It is valuable. It is valuable because it helps us create a funding source to develop the partnerships to actually create meaningful housing that creates volume. Not onesies-twosies, not four or five per development, especially when we can't make the numbers work on a development like this. And I can have Jesse talk a little bit more about that when you have questions. So we feel that for this project, this fee in lieu is actually equally valuable to providing the housing because of the opportunities that it can provide down the road. And I know we have, you know, projects coming up that hopefully will be able to answer those questions with a multifamily product with, you know, more of a dense kind of housing product. So unfortunately, Mayor, I'm not going to be able to answer your question in a more succinct way than that. But in order to keep moving along, I am going to talk about the specific units. And Paul's going to come up and just quickly run through that. And then we'll be available for questions that you may have.
Sorry, my name is Paul Norquist. I'm with Design Practice out of Denver. We've been working with Jesse and Bobby on this particular site now for a couple of years and involved with Andy for majority of that time. So I just want to quickly run through the architecture as designed. As Andy mentioned, the site was designed with the single families on the perimeter. Part of that reason was to keep that perimeter more porous than a linear townhome form turned to those adjacent neighbors would. It allows, and while the homes are fairly close together, there is, there's 10 feet of space between them. They have smaller backyards, so they're not built right up to the fence line. And then we take the denser, 21 denser townhome units and put them in the middle of the site. So as Andy said, the project in itself, if you just look at our project alone, sort of densifies to the middle. In the greater context of things, we anticipate in the long run, Pine Street Plaza will come through with that different zoning and a much higher height standard. That'll create that taper as you move south along East Street. As Robert said, there's two different single-family types that are proposed for the site. The first is a fairly modest, smaller footprint home. This allows for a larger privatized yard space behind it. It's a little over 2,400 square feet above grade. There is potential for, it does have a basement. It's, it will be currently unfinished with the option for the buyer to finish the basement. This is a quick layout. So the main levels, your typical living area, kitchen, small, or space for dining table, some storage, powder room, entry and stairs, decent-sized garage. All of us here in Colorado, we like our toys. And we found that a slightly larger garage is always beneficial. We take advantage of the simplicity of construction and will, will use the entire, or almost the entire footprint on the upper level. And since the living level on the main level is slightly smaller, we're adding a den space on the upper level, should the basement not be finished. The second single-family type is a little unique in that Jesse and Bobby really wanted to offer some homes that could be used well for aging in place. So these, these homes are a larger footprint on the main level, but they include a primary suite. So the main level allows for complete living. So if you have aging parents or someone with a disability, this becomes a really great option here. In the slides right now, you'll see the stairs to the front door, where actually one of the minor changes that we're working with the civil team is bringing that front door threshold down, so there will be no step into the home. But again, the layout on the main floor, you have your living functions as on the other unit, plus the primary suite. And then upstairs is a two-bedroom, two-bath additional space. So it's a much narrower space upstairs. This actually keeps, this is the shorter of the two homes. And it has to do with the pitch of the roof and the width that that pitch sits on. The townhouses, the one major difference between the townhouses that we're proposing here and what we're commonly seeing built right now is that our garages are detached. It allows for a couple of things to occur. They, as far as living space is concerned, on the, on the living level with the garage, if we do a tuck on the garage, then we either have a small entry living level and a stair up. And so the living level is much, much higher above grade. But in this case, what we can do is add this garden-level apartment below, or not apartment, I'm sorry, garden-level space below. And we see this space as an option for people who either have possibly a living or extended family. And we really saw this as an option if, in the future, the city should adopt an ADU ordinance, that some of these units could be converted to ADU units at garden level. It doesn't exist right now, so they're proposed as single units all the way through. But we want to make them easily adaptable if that should, if that should pass at some point. So the end units have that option. They have an exterior stair, directly accessible from the exterior. They also have the interior connection. The center units, because we don't have that exterior option or exterior access option, those would be just a standard garden-level basement space below. They do not have the rooftop enclosed space. So they are two and a half stories where, or I guess they're two stories with the garden level, whereas the end units are two and a half stories with the garden level for that future use. Here is an example, on the left is the example of a conversion of that lower space to actually a two-bedroom apartment or two-bedroom ADU. The last thing I want to talk about is, or not the last thing, but as far as layout is concerned, parking always becomes an issue. We worked really hard to create as much parking as possible, or at least adequate parking for the units. Each of the units, as said, has its own two-car garage. But since we have very little street frontage, and much of it will be used at the, at the drive entrances, we do provide an additional, additional off-street parking within the, within the project. So there's 24 additional surface parking spaces within the project. We want to, we wanted just to show the slide to compare it to what Clementine looks like right now and what that street frontage will look like as you come down either Highway 42 or East Street. It's a very similar informed layout. As you can see from this slide, the, the single families on the edges are a little bit lower. And where we asked for that height waiver is in the, in the townhomes in the middle. The majority of the reason for that height waiver is to be able to get that light into those garden-level units. Of course, we're here to answer any additional questions, but quickly, I just want to bring Jesse up from a developer standpoint. And he can just give you a little bit of information about themselves and maybe answer some of the other questions as far as fees are concerned. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Good evening, council. Thank you for hearing us out here tonight. My name is Jesse Truman. I live on the edge of Louisville. I'm unincorporated Boulder County, but just down the street off of Paradise Lane. So I do live in the community. Also, thought it would be worth mentioning that we are small. I run a small capital group that has been doing developments for the last 12 years, all locally, within 30 miles of here. So this Louisville is something that's near and dear to my heart. You know, I have two kids that go to Monarch, and we're in this community. And one of, you know, assuming this goes through, we actually are considering buying one of these houses. So this is, again, a project that's, that's close to my heart. I just wanted to mainly address maybe some of the questions that have already popped up a little bit. Regarding some of the homes, you know, there's, there's 10 homes there now that are low-rent options. They're, it's, they're in rough shape. We have one that's a trailer that has been vacant for a year, and it's gross. Three of the homes are currently vacant and are uninhabitable. We've, we just, you know, and six of them we have been running to locals. And we're waiting as long as we can to, to start. So, you know, it's not lost on me that we might be losing a few of those units. But again, through the design that we've had with these townhome levels, with the basements and the exterior staircases, this is a development that we did already down in Denver, and it was very, very well-received and provided, you know, it doesn't even have to be affordable. It's just marked, like, the way it's designed and for what it is, it's very efficient and would create 12, you know, assuming that the ADU gets approved by you guys in the next couple of years, whenever. If that does get approved, you know, not only will there be 12 units, that'll probably be cheaper than the tiny homes that are there now. They'll be nicer and newer. And I think it's also worth pointing out that the people that get to own those units, you know, their mortgages will also be kind of offset. You know, they're providing a low-rent option for someone in the community. And they're also helping, you know, their mortgage get paid off a little bit easier. And then the last thing I just wanted to hit quickly was the, you know, fee in lieu with the affordability. Again, the, to do five units, the way the code was written, and again, I won't, I could sit here and talk to it for an hour just on the fee in lieu versus providing affordable units. It's a tough subject. Like Andy said, it's complicated. And I personally felt like that was written for a 300-unit apartment building, where you can, you know, it's not a problem to put up 12% of the units and make them affordable, because they're already tiny and small. And to change it from a $1,800 a month rent down to a $1,500 a month rent is not a big ask. But when you're building homes that are this, you know, these are not apartments, to provide five units would completely destroy the feasibility of the project. It's not, I mean, we would lose money by doing that. And I'm not going to sit here and bore you with the math. If you want to hit me up with an email or a phone call later, I'd be happy to walk you through it. It's just not feasible. And, you know, and the inclusionary housing fee is not cheap. I don't have, it's, and it's complicated. I don't think anyone can put a number on it. I've guessed, based on what I've seen, it's probably in the neighborhood of probably $600,000, plus or minus 100 or 200. 200. It, it's, it's a painful fee for us. But, you know, it's still, the viable, it would still be viable to do. So I think that's all I have to say. Happy to take any questions that you guys have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Council members with questions for the applicant?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, let me start by saying I trust you, believe what you're coming forward with. Like to understand, excuse me, I need, I need water, Meredith. Is there any water around? I'm sorry.
I'll go get you one.
No, no. Well, that's not gonna work. I'm, thank you so much, Meredith. Excuse me. Trying to understand, I mean, I, we have a lot of, I'm trying not to get in a soapbox here about the process, right, and the obstacles and we're working on that. You know, what we're seeing, council, for the first time, feels like a finished product, right? And so we want to have this conversation about what is possible and what could potentially be there. And we're so far along in this project that the idea of, hey, you know, could you, could you rethink a couple of things? Sure. We'd love to rethink. Thank you so much. We'd love to redo the whole thing and come up with a brand new project. That would be awesome. So I, I do understand that moment right now and how that's hard for us to kind of collaborate. And, and that's not really how it's designed at this moment. What I'm trying to understand is what, in your estimation, is that 12% inclusionary zoning impossible due to XYZ? Like, what, is it, is it the quantity of units you can fit there? Is it the density you are allowed? If you had 46 units, could you afford four of them to be affordable? Five of them, you know, could you get the 12% if you had the same lot and you had higher density? The, the smallest, here's, here's an actual question. The, the smallest property I see is some, somewhere around 2,500 square feet without the basement?
The, the smallest property, 20, 2,400, yeah.
And that, the town, the smallest townhome is 2,400 square feet?
Including all levels.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. So again, like, I, not trying to be in design here, right, but trying to like, God, I'd love for some 1,500 square foot units, right, that lowercase a affordable housing. These are going to be gorgeous. These are going to be brand new and they're going to be 2,500 square feet. Who's going to move into these? I mean, they're six, I mean, and I'm sure, I don't know if you'll tell us, I'm sure you have a sense of what the values of these properties would each be. Otherwise, you wouldn't be building it if you didn't have an idea of what you could sell each one for in a couple of years. But are any of them going to be anywhere near attainable for 100% AMI or 120% AMI by your current estimation? That's a big question. I don't know if you have that information.
What's AMI in, in, you know, it, it's a difficult question to answer just because the, everything changes so fast. I mean, interest rates have doubled. The, I'm getting a sense that you're asking, couldn't you build some smaller units that might be cheaper and it wouldn't, the delta wouldn't be as bad? The, part of the problem with that is, is, is the land costs are so high. The fees that were, you know, the school dedication fees, the land fees, the park fees, now the affordable fees, the water tap fees. I mean, we're starting at $400,000 and we haven't built anything yet. It's, it's fru-, it's frustrating for me to do, like, it's frustrating, you know, I, I mean, I wish we could do lower end products for people. I mean, I have kids that are going to be going out in the world in eight years and they're going to be probably living in my basement for a while. I, you know, it, it, there's, I don't know if that probably doesn't answer your question.
Well, so I appreciate the concept of the ADUs as a potential in the future, that, that, hey, you can split the units up. The, the person who owns the whole building can subsidize their mortgage with renting out a smaller space. That smaller space is less expensive, right? It's, it's kind of built in affordability by breaking up those spaces maybe in the future. Just trying to understand if there's something that we're putting in the way, other than the request, right?
Yeah.
And just the fact that we have the request. We want 12% affordable housing. Is there something that's in the way of you being able to design something that brings the, the desired amount of affordable housing? And is that something that we can talk about between now and the, and the final PUD? Is there something that would allow you to bring affordable housing to this unit? Or is fee in lieu the only thing you can offer? I mean, it's a genuine question. I'm not, I'm not, that's why I started with, I trust you. I'm not trying to say, you're trying to get one over on us. I'm just trying to understand, why can't we get this thing that we want from people who are coming in and trying to build? How can we work with you to get that affordable housing when it seems like it's just a nonstarter? And, and is there something in the design that we're missing that, that could do that for all of us? For you guys, it's still pencils. It's great. For us, we get that. What, you know, and, and how much conversation have you had with our staff to, to crack that nut? Because that's the nut that we're trying to crack.
Yeah. I, I, I would say for, again, and I think it depends on, you know, it will depend on a per project basis, what makes sense. You know, for, for this project, again, just shooting from the hip, I don't have all the numbers in front of me. The, the 12% is what, is the problem, you know? And, and again, it's because the delta is so big, you know? The, if I, again, there's no great, you know, again, most of my research was done on basically mirroring Boulder County's and, and the city of Boulder's numbers because that's apparently what you guys seem to be kind of, at least basing some things off of, you know, to, to provide, to make some of these affordable, you know, based on AMIs. You know, you're talking, we, we can only, if we're doing a for sale product, you know, it's going to be in the neighborhood of like $400,000 for a townhome. And so for us to do five of those here, I, I mean, you're looking at, you're basically asking us to eat $2 million, which is like, like, you know, we'd lose money. I mean, we're not, we're not even making that much money on the whole product based on our current performance. So that's why it's like, if I'm looking, this is like, okay, can we eat 500? And, you know, it's painful, but we can do it. Can we eat 2 million? No. We just, it's not, like, we can't do it. So it, it, maybe that, that's, to directly answer your question, in my opinion, it's a nonstarter for us and it's, and for everyone else behind us with the current conditions, the way they are. The, the 12% on, on a townhome or a single family product, it's just too big of a delta. It cannot economically be achieved with the cost of the way things are right now. You know, again, apartments are a little bit different story because, you know, when you say 12%, you know, you're only asking people to eat a couple hundred dollars a month on rentals and people don't really sell apartments, you know, and no one's doing condo because construction defect lawsuits have been going on since 2005. So.
I, I appreciate the, the additional information, right? I mean, it's, this is, we're, we're trying really hard for this. You know, Rob, I don't know if there's something you want to?
Something I would like to add to the discussion when the time's appropriate.
Yeah, no, I, I, I'm just trying to get my head around it and trying to figure out how.
How do you solve the problem?
And I was here when we passed it. And my frustration was when we passed it, there, there weren't necessarily incentives along with it, or there wasn't necessarily a toolkit for how to. And even to your point, like, what is affordable housing? Is it 120% AMI? Is it 60% AMI? Like, when we define it, you know, what is it that we're asking to be provided? So it's, it is complicated. I know it's a moving target, but anything else you can add, Rob, would be great.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the inclusionary ordinance and the fee in lieu. So we, we adopted this in 2021 and we did adopt a fee in lieu that's per square foot. It's $9.24 per square foot for, for sale housing, $4.72 square cents per square foot for finished rental market rate housing. That was based on 2021 Boulder County area median income. And I, I think that those numbers aren't met. So if you built the 12%, that's five units in this project. That fee in lieu is not intended to build five units. It's intended to subsidize the units so that they could be sold at 80 to 60% AMI within the, within some other project. So it's intended to just subsidize that amount. So they kind of achieve different things depending on what the ci-, you know, what the city council ultimately wants to do. The last thing I wanted to add is we are doing a housing study. I think you've gotten some preliminary information on that. We hope to have that done. I don't know if it's going to be in time for this project. You know, we're hoping to finalize that. Our consult, we asked our consultants to do some pro forma work of development scenarios for different development types with this exact question. What's an appropriate incentive from a density standpoint that makes a project feasible? Now, this is one moment in time based on lots of assumptions, but I think we did like three or four different housing types. And they're going to come back with some proposals for either increasing the fee in exchange for density or increasing the number of units in exchange for density based on their kind of third party independent analysis of what would be a financially feasible project. So I, again, that doesn't necessarily inform this project, but I, I just want council to know that, you know, that we are working on developing an incentive that I think achieves what you want to achieve.
Council, Councilmember Kern?
I, I actually just wanted to thank Caleb for, and that's why I let you speak first, just so you know. Yeah, I, I will honestly tell you, when I saw this, that was one of my, my really big concerns, as I mentioned before. Trust me, I know that those little houses are not in great shape that are there. This is going to be phenomenal in comparison. I, I know that. But I've also met some of the people who are renting in there and I know it would be heartbreaking to me if I was in their position and being displaced for a project like this. But that being said, I want to thank you because this is great. It's going to add a lot of, you know, energy and livability to our downtown area, which is phenomenal for the economy and good for, I think, the downtown presence and, you know, like, spending. And that should be good. I, I was actually thinking of these, these basement areas. So we're increasing the height of these, of the townhouses. And it, it does seem like they're going to be pretty high, in my opinion, looking at them and given how visible this is from Highway 42, so heavily traveled. But I like the idea of the apartment, the potential for the apartments downstairs. I think that's really brilliant, again, to offset some of the costs for people. And to the point I think you're making, you can't make just that, like, a unit that you could sell because you have to sell it with the land, right?
Correct.
Yeah. I'm empathizing with your struggle on figuring this out. I, I'm hoping that we can come up collectively as a city staff and council, a good way to use the, the money in lieu. Should we go that way? Because I would really like to find a solution for the people that we're displacing, if that makes sense. It's, my heart breaks in a lot of ways for that. But this seems like a really great thing for the community, so I want to make sure that's said on the record and you hear it from me, that I do appreciate the years at this point of work that you have all put into this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Councilmember Hatton.
Less of a question, more of a comment. I'd like to first start by saying thank you for being so thoughtful in the design, not only of what families need today, but how these units and these different housing products can be reformatted in the future as family needs change over time. To me, what I'm hearing in this conversation regarding fee in lieu for affordable housing is that while we had the best intentions when writing that code, some improvements could be had. And so I personally don't think this particular project should be held up because we wrote a code with the best of intentions that isn't quite hitting the mark when we can utilize that fee in lieu in the future. And also, in the meantime, develop some housing that can help revitalize and bring foot traffic to a downtown area that so desperately needs it. We can't solve everything in one project. Not to say affordable housing is not important, I'm saying the exact opposite by saying that we need to reevaluate that code based on what I hear today and see also in collaboration with the housing study, to the point of Director Zaccaro's comments, what can that code look like in the future? So I appreciate your partnership and your thoughtful design and it's not your fault the code was written this way.
Good. I want to take public comment. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Any public comments? Let's see if we've got, yes, Mr. Cooperman.
Josh Cooperman. I live in Louisville. I just have three fairly short comments. The first one, if you take the approximate square footage that's going to be finished and the number of units, and you take that $9.24 from our ordinance, that works out to a fee in lieu of about $775,000. Anyway, at the planning commission meeting, I made a small comment about some of the materials being used or proposed to be used. And I noted that the property is across 42 from some open space and suggested that we might want to reconsider some of the materials, in particular the fencing and a little bit of the siding, as potentially fire risks. I know that the, the consultant, or the city's consultants, right, mapped out the fire risk on that side of town and it's not particularly large. But even so, it, it might be worth thinking about a little bit of those, a little bit about those materials that have been proposed. My last comment, I, I don't want to take that much time on, but I think, as has been alluded to before, there was some very nice conversation at the planning committing, planning committee meeting, sorry, basically about kind of the intersection of the zoning that is currently there and the nature of what is being proposed. And I think, you know, basically, I think we need to have a conversation about, you know, redoing zoning in, in places like this so that we get housing that is more in line with what we'd like to see. Thanks.
Thank you. Summer?
Sherri Summer. You know, in my previous comments, I, I thanked you for the good work that you would do representing people of Louisville. And here we are, you're already doing it. You know, I really appreciate your comments, Councilmember Dickinson and, and Kern, you know, I thank you for talking to the people who live there. I also have talked to the people who live there and at Clementine and Sunnyside. And, you know, we all have hardships, right? And there's going to be hardships, you know? I talked to a young man. He said, I'm 24 years old. I don't know, where am I going to go? Where am I going to go? And those hardships, we need to think about. This is a perfectly suited place for affordable housing. It's closer to transportation. It's close to walkability. I mean, it's, it's a great location. And so we're sort of deferring things. It's a dream deferred for people who are, you know, basically being evicted. And I find that very sad. There's a lot of waivers being requested. What are we getting? You know, I have a very good friend and we like to say to each other, the sidewalk goes both ways. You know, maybe literally the sidewalk should go both ways almost on the development, right? Because those developments, to me, when I hear the waivers, I know that things are expensive, water, construction materials. But I also, you know, cha-ching. Those mean money. Waivers are money. And what are we getting? What are those people getting? I did talk, so I talked to the people at Clementine. One other thing is, you know, how are people going to get there to the shared experience of the park, right? The people at Clementine, the man I talked to, he said, well, my kids and I have to walk around. We have to walk around the sidewalk. We have to walk around the, you know, walk around, we have to walk around the sidewalk, we have to walk around the for-, you know, the gravity brewing, all those things, walk across the train tracks, and then we can get downtown, and the park's right there." So are we going to be asking for a way for all of these families to be able to go to the park easily? And that's something we really benefit from in Lewisville, that we can get around. We don't have to like walk around and go down the street and all these things. And I think that should be asked, asked for right now. I also want to challenge the assumption about more rooftops being equal to more vitality. Even at the last LRC meeting, one of the members said, "You know, we have to really figure out the problem we're solving for." I mean, here we are, there are people who are all on the same page, they all want economic vitality, it's not that easy. And it's not necessarily more foot traffic. There are a lot of, there are different things, and we need to figure out what the actual problem is. So the reflex of just saying, "Build more, it'll work better," I don't agree with. I mean, maybe, maybe a little, but is the price worth it? We're just getting more housing, it's not more affordable housing, it's more density. And I don't know that that fits with what I heard from people in Lewisville, the best small-town atmosphere, more density, losing people who have, this is their only place to live. Thank you.
Any more public comments? Yes, Ms. Smith?
Hi, everybody, it's getting late. I'm Catherine Smith, a Lewisville resident. And I guess it's been enlightening to me to hear the conversation tonight around affordable housing. But what I think I'm observing is this trend where we're deferring the real process and the policy. And the fee and lieu gives us a way out, because we're not doing nothing. But we kind of are doing nothing because we don't actually have something on the table where we take that money from the fee and lieu and convert it into housing. We're talking about, maybe sometime in the future, we're going to figure out how to get, get money from other sources, because the fee and lieu isn't enough to actually, you know, construct housing for the people who are going to be displaced. And it's not to say that I have the solution. I, I'm hearing that there's a pretty tough nut to crack here and that we haven't cracked it. And so I just want to point out, I think everybody's heard it, I think you're all compassionate people and you understand. But I, I do think that's sort of the trajectory our city is on. And I think we really have to think about, we're a place where I, you know, I hear people say, people on, on city staff can't live in our city. People who perform important services in our community can't live in our city. And I think ultimately, that doesn't get us to the kind of community, certainly I want to live in, but also I think many other people in Lewisville don't want to live in. So I say, keep at it, City Council.
Thank you. If, if we could, I don't, we've taken already a couple of breaks, I just need to get some water. And I bet we could probably, if we can come back in about three minutes, just take a quick break, is that enough? Is it okay? All right, and let's do that. Thanks. I want to, I want to. We're back. I want to frame the discussion because one of the things that I get to do is frame the discussion a little bit, that's so, I better do that. But one of the things that we need to keep in mind is that we have an application and we have criteria by which to judge the application, and we have evidence and information to use and apply the criteria to. And it's a challenge, I got to tell you, it's a challenge for all of us, whether you're on council or not, whether you're a lawyer, like Dietrich and me or not, to, to try to completely wrap yourselves around quasi-judicial process. It really is. Because you want to say, "Hey, thank you for doing this." And gee, I hate this disordnance. But that's not what our job is. Our job is that the applicant has come to us under standards that we set, and it's our job, based on that information, make a decision. So, and, and that, that's not a knock on concerns that have been raised or whatever, it's what we have to do. And if, you know, that's my job is the, you know, part of, part of my job. And I think frankly, somebody would have said just what I said if I hadn't said it. But I am going to say it because that's, that's my job to do. What I'd like to do is, and I'll, you know, so the, the home audience can follow along too, one of the things we do in this instance is, one of the things staff does, and it's a wonderful thing, is if you go to, it's about page 19 of the staff memo, which is roughly, what is it, 349 of the packet. What, what staff did there is to, to do a list, actually, I probably should start, just a minute. Well, yeah, it, to do a list of the criteria that we actually have to apply. And what they do is to list the criteria, list their proposed finding for us with the idea that if we accept their recommendation, we, you know, we're, we're noting that that criteria is complied with. And then the narrative which explains things. And they do a remarkable job, this is, and, and they do this day in and day out. But it is important to recognize that they've been through this analysis. We have raised some questions and talked about that. But what I want to do is to start with the PUD, PUD criteria analysis. And there are a total of 13 criteria, and I don't, we don't need to go through them all. Some of them are not applicable even under the facts of this situation. So the question I have, or first framing question is, does anybody have any concern that the first 10 conditions are complied with? Is there any debate about that? Because if there isn't, we'll go on. We don't need to rehash. Okay? Hearing none? Do you, do you know what I'm, yeah, let's, okay. So let's, let's move on, because I want to try to proceed by exception. You know, I want to proceed by the things that, to narrow down what it is that we really might be concerned about and to focus on that. But it's important, as we do this, that we are establishing a record that we think this application meets these criteria. All right, so the second says, hold on. Bear with me for just a moment. It is the criteria in ordinance 1728120B, and that's where there are, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to work my way through here.
Yeah, Mayor, I might have a, a similar kind of approach. I was, I was, I was writing down some of the, and I, I think a few pages earlier on 15 of the, of that particular packet, you have the PUD waiver requests, or PUD waivers requested.
Right.
The standards and the requested values, and they have the height waivers there. This seems to kind of be the crux of what you're getting at, like, of these waivers, do I take issue with any of these, or do I have particular issues with, with this section?
I, I want to make sure that, except for the waivers, if people have, and I want to just raise the question, is there any concern but for the waiver issues that people have that this application otherwise meets the criteria? Okay, so let's do just, do what we're talking about, what you're suggesting, which is what I'm getting to, which is the, the waivers. And that, for people who are still with us and following along, is page 15 of the memo. And that is page 345 of the packet. The first are the PUD waivers, right? And the waivers requested, our yard bulk requirement changes, minimum lot area, lot coverage, front yard setback, side interiors setback, rear setback, and structure height. Are there, if comments about any one or other of those? Okay, Councilmember Dickinson.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I look at most of these as sort of the little A affordable housing. Not that these are tiny homes and they're going to be super cheap, but as illustrated earlier in the presentation, you know, I think the typical design is nine, 4,000, 5,000 square foot homes. You have these large homes, it's much simpler, it's much easier, and you have, you know, multimillion dollar homes being built. So here you're asking for, you know, smaller lot area, larger lot coverage, smaller setbacks, slightly higher buildings. Almost every one of these is, can we build more smaller units? Which I think is very much in keeping with the comp plan, it's very much in keeping with the policy direction we're headed towards of asking for more smaller things. We, we're not asking for big, huge mansions in this part of town. And so I think it's, I think it, it fits with some of the things that we're trying to accomplish. So that's my, my first sense of kind of all of that, is that, you know, if this is a 6,000 square foot mansion and they want it to be 40 feet instead of 30 feet, it's like, no, that makes no sense to me. But we're trying to make a smaller, denser, taller unit, like, okay, those things make sense, and we're, and we're squeezing and packing them in a little tighter. So getting 36 units on that lot is impressive, and you have to do some of these things. And I think, so these are the kind of waivers I want to grant for that purpose. That's, that's kind of how I feel about these. And, and so I can be done, I would say that the fee and lieu for open space makes perfect sense to me in that this does not seem like a highly accessible space for our community to be coming to enjoy open space. So I think creating public space there isn't super valuable as, but there is a fee and lieu for not providing it. And then again, if, if I, as much concerned as I have over the affordable housing piece, we have a structure with a fee and lieu in place to at least capture some funds to then try to do affordable housing, even if the city wanted to purchase some of these units and turn them into affordable housing, that becomes a possibility. So I think I would prefer, and I want it to be very clear for the record, I would prefer that we find ways to create affordable housing while we're building, if we can. But at least, I mean, we, we wrote in the same policy another way through it, which is not inexpensive, is this fee and lieu. So I don't want to pretend that, oh, you guys are just, you know, getting one over us because you're only going to give us a fee and lieu. So those are my things, the fee, the two fees in lieu, and then all these different setbacks or, or waivers, I apologize, including setbacks. I'm okay with all of these, and, and I, I understand them as being purposeful in the direction that I'm interested in headed, heading.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember McKernan?
Thank you. I have a similar comment to make. I think that the, the height request, it exceeds more than 10% of what the height is, and that was the allowance that we gave to people rebuilding after the Marshall Fire, was a 10% automatically variance on this, that actually even exceeds what we're giving to current residents to try to rebuild. And I have, Andy, actually seen a lot of your designs go up in my neighborhood, so, yes, and they're fun. I mean, we call, a lot of people are calling them the Amsterdam Houses, actually, because this day, Bruce, and the height. They're very tall in comparison. And when I saw this, it kind of filtered back in a lot of the conversation I'm hearing with the new construction in the west side of town as well. So pluses and minuses, I think granting the variance to allow for potential apartments, should we pass an EDU allowance, I think to me would be the only reason that I can see to grant such a tall height so close to town and other low-story buildings. So the thoughtfulness of it, thank you, I appreciate that. But I, I wanted to throw that out there. And again, it, we, we definitely need to come up with a plan quickly. And I think Councilwoman Hamilton is correct, that we need to change our policy, we need to move forward fast on how we go ahead and take these funds in lieu so that projects like this can continue, but we can find a good solution.
Umi asked for clarification of your comments. Are you, are you agreeing with Councilmember? Dickinson?
Yes, I am, I am agreeing with Councilwoman Dickinson.
I'm thinking Pro Tem is what I'm.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Sorry, and I'm probably going to start calling him Pro Tem because frankly, anyway. But it's just a lot easier to have one. Why are you turning red?
Why am I turning red?
Yeah, you are. Anyway, do you agree with, I mean, I just want to make sure, I, I understand the policy issue, the policy issue is not on the table.
Right.
I just, I, we do have a lot of other things, and we will deal with some of these issues in our work plan, but I want to make sure I'm clarifying.
Yes, on these variances and these waivers and the first 10, I agree with, I do agree with the public comment on some of the Umi stuff, though. Thank you.
I don't have anything to add. I agree that waivers for this purpose make sense.
So from my standpoint, I agree with Council, with Mayor Pro Tem Dickinson. I, I, you put it very well on all of those. I find that the criteria for the preliminary subdivision plat and the planned unit development I find that the criteria for the preliminary subdivision plat and planned unit development is, have been met and to the extent that they're applicable, which according to the staff memo, and that it's appropriate to grant under the rules in place, the waivers that have been requested. Do we have a motion? Please. Oh, wait, sorry. Closing public hearing. Go ahead.
I will move to approve Resolution Number 75, Series 2023, a resolution approving a preliminary subdivision plat and preliminary planned unit development for 15 single family and 21 townhome units on a 3.6 acre parcel located at 421, 533, and 565 East Street.
Second. Roll call.
Mayor Pro Tem Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Kern?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahey?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Very good. Resolution passes. Congratulations and thank you. And I guess we will be hearing on this again. Everybody, I think, knows that probably as a policy matter, we should be maybe revisiting this as whether we need to come back, especially under circumstances like this, a second time, but that's a story for another day. Thank you. Onto ordinance number 1866, Series 2023, an ordinance adopting by reference the 2023 National Electric Code. We're on second reading, public hearing. And opening the public hearing with a staff presentation.
Hey. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I'm Chad Root, City Building Official. This is basically just housekeeping. Every three years, the state of Colorado adopts a new electric code. And this is just keeping up with their requirement to, for us, since we do the inspections under the state purview, to keep up with the adopted code that they've adopted. They've, they have already adopted the 2023 NEC by the NFPA August of this year. And have, what they do is they give jurisdictions one year to adopt this code. Failure to adopt this code or enforce on it basically makes it null and void where we cannot do the inspections and the state would take over the inspections. So it's basically, a lot of jurisdictions have it where it's just written that, hey, when the state adopts it, that's, that's the new code. We have it where it just comes to council and probably for public comment and just acknowledgement that we're adopting the new electrical code. And the game plan was to have it go into effect the first of the year. Just makes a little more sense. So I'll try to keep it sweet and simple.
I thought you were going to go through all of the. And, and I'm going to overrule the city manager on that. First round of public comment. Any public comment? Okay. Council questions? Yes, sir.
So if it goes into effect January 1st, any permits that are in right now? I mean, by the time you're inspecting in January, I mean, just could you just help us understand how it affects current applications, current projects?
Yeah, so the current applications will be under the 2020 NEC. And anything that comes in after, I think it's actually the fifth because of the 30-day period, anything that comes in after the fifth will be under the 23 NEC. We actually have a couple fire homes that are asking to come in under the 23 and we're letting them because it's a greater code, because there's some provisions in there where they don't have to add electrical to islands. So we actually have, I think, five builders that are asking to come in under the 23 and we're allowing them.
And is it a submission or acceptance? So if I submit my application on December 30th, but you don't approve it until January 15th?
Yeah, once we get the application.
Submittal, okay.
It's the submittal.
Thank you. That's all.
Yep. Any other council comments, questions? Thank you. That was a good, good presentation. Second round of public comments. Anybody have any public comments from the public? Any further, seeing none? Any further council discussion? Right, I'm going to close the public hearing. We have a motion.
I move we accept ordinance number 1866, Series 2023, an ordinance adopting by reference the 2023 National Electric Code.
Second.
Second reading? Oh, you're seconding. Okay.
Second. Any discussion? All right. Let's take a roll call.
Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahey?
Yes.
Councilmember Kern?
Yes.
Let's move on to the discussion direction. Action, process to fill, City Council Ward 1 vacancy. The body isn't even dead yet and we're trying to fill the spot.
We have an empty chair over here that needs a person in it. So good evening, Mayor and Council. As you are aware, because we did this quite recently, within the last 12 months, with a vacancy currently on council, it is the council's job to now appoint someone to fill that position. You have, before you are having your packet, the application we used last year, I also gave you the questions that Lafayette used this year in their application process, just to give you some different options there. This evening, what staff needs from you is kind of a timeline you're looking at for when you want to open the applications. Staff suggests probably as soon as possible in December. Similar to what we did last year, we would leave that open probably into maybe a week or two into January, past the holidays, so people have a chance to see what they want to do. The plan then would probably be to hold interviews on the evening of January 30th and you would appoint someone to the seat in February. That's a suggested plan from staff, but it's up to you guys if that works for you or Also, this person, whoever you appoint to the seat, will hold the seat until the November election, in which case they can, they have a chance to run again. Or if they don't like sitting up there with the rest of you, they can say, no, I'm never doing this again. So staff just needs some direction tonight on that timeline. Additionally, depending on what you want to do for an application, you may want to appoint two members to write the questions for the application. So if you want to consider that this evening as well, whatever you guys decide on that timeline and such, staff will put into play and we'll start the process moving.
Thank you. Public comment on this? All right. Let's see. Council questions and discussion. I, I'm going to start this, actually. I am a little torn on this because I think that, I think we did a good job last time. I think we had, I think we've got some good people. Yeah, pretty good. The, the difference is now I'm the mayor and we've got things to do and I'm like feeling some urgency. And I'm feeling some urgency that if we are going to do anything on work plan discussions, the faster we can get a full council, the better. But we have the holidays and that is hard. And we, we had this problem, you know, we had this problem last year. I think we, remind, remind me, Meredith, did we get, did we get a lot of applications after the first of the year?
I think we got almost all the applications in the last two days.
Well, and you know, we could say, well, yeah, that's going to be if we set, you know, mid-December.
Whatever the last year.
Yeah. And it's November 28th. You know, I, I'm torn, but I, I want to raise the issue of trying to get done what we can as soon as we can. And I recognize also that, you know, this is the word I represented. And so I care very deeply about getting it represented again soon, because there certainly was a time when Ward 3 was, you know, unrepresented. It was, you know, and that, I think, weighed on us. Not enough to speed things up too fast. I mean, you can go faster than you need to, but I, what I wanted to do was to, to at least put that urgency issue out there and, and hear what other people say. I, I haven't made a final, you know, I'm more wanting to know what people have to say about this, but I, I think that's part of the question is, I think, and I, I agree personally, I think it's a good idea to have a couple of people, you know, work, work over the questions. Thank you for putting that all together. But I think that can be done pretty quickly. I'm not worried about our council's ability to move fast. I'm more concerned about, are we going to be giving people enough notice? Are people going to be paying any attention to this right now with the holidays coming up? I don't know. So that's, that's where I'm at right now. What kind of comments do we have? Yeah.
So were you thinking that you wanted to, God, I think I put this too close to me. Were you thinking that you wanted to have the decision made before the holiday then? So close it by the holiday? So applicants had to apply by then? Is that what you're thinking?
Well, I, I'm not thinking. You're making, I mean, you're assuming facts, not in evidence, is what I would say. No, I think that's a good distinction. I, I think one question is, I don't think there's any way we can get somebody seated until after the holidays. I think that's not realistic. But I, I think, can we, could we get an application out? Could we get people to respond to it by, you know, Christmas? Maybe, but do we want to do that? And, you know, it might make a little bit of difference on the backend because then it's a question of, well, okay, if we get all of those applications before Christmas, we can start scheduling interviews, we might be able to move it up two weeks from, you know, the late, late January. Does it really matter? And I, I don't know the answer to that. So you're right, there's two different issues. There's the application deadline and there's the, you know, interviews and getting somebody seated. We were pretty quick to make a decision once we interviewed people. And so that, that part I'm not concerned about, but I, I'm very interested in what you guys have to say about this, so. Hi, Councilmember Hefner, what would you like to say?
Yeah, thanks. I, I'm sympathetic to the desire to get it done quickly, but I think I'm a realist on this time of year and mid-January seems about the, the earliest that it would be realistic to ask for a, you know, a, a good slate of competitive candidates. And to me, it, it seems more important to get it done well than to, you know, potentially exclude some folks from the process who might have otherwise participated. So I, I guess my inclination is get the application out there as quickly as possible. I, I think the questions from last year are probably still fine, except changing Ward 3 to Ward 1. But I do think we'd have to hold it open, you know, sometime into January to give everyone a, a fair opportunity to put in their application.
Assuming that's a, you know, we're going to reach consensus on that, it sounds like you're volunteering to take a look at that, at that application. So I'll take it, especially because you're not here, as volunteering just by implication.
I, I'm happy to take a look and look at all the places where Ward 3 should be changed to Ward 1.
Thank you. I'm going to echo what Councilmember Hefner said. I'm typically subscribed to a warm body in an effort to decrease the timeline is not always the best choice. We want to find the right candidate to represent Ward 1. And I'm afraid that shortening the timeline will not lead to a fair and equitable process given the time of year right now. So, so I would prefer that we move forward with a, with a January timeline, I think a few weeks after the year or a week after. I'll leave the details to be decided. I, I don't think it's reasonable to, to do the submission deadline this year.
Yeah, I, I think I agree with that. I would love to have it done faster. On January 30th, it's like, what? That's forever. But I think something you said, Mayor, is like, in the end, what's the difference in two weeks, right? In, in our cycle of really like a, a major meeting every two weeks, you know, the difference between two weeks is one meeting, right? So I don't think we need to be unnecessarily quick about it. I do think we need to address the selection sort of process and criteria and how we finish those, the interviews and, and discuss the candidates. I think we got some reasonably negative feedback around just the sort of transparency of that discussion. And so I think, I think that is worth us, one of the interesting things, and please, attorney, Kelly, correct me if I'm wrong, is she online, actually? Oh, Derek, that's, oh, that's right. That's, yeah, look at me, I'm an idiot. Anyway, the, the charter says we need to select a councilman. We could right now vote to pick someone, right? Like, so we decide this process. And I think we can talk in small groups about the, the right way, you can pick two people, whatever you want to do, Mayor, to talk about the right way to do that selection process and, and creating some sort of criteria for us to have a discussion around, you know, what we think is our important characteristics of a councilperson and to be able to speak to those when we're evaluating people who are applying as opposed to just, well, who'd you like, who'd I like, and then have a debate about it. But being able to be a little bit more strategic around that discussion. Because I think, again, going from feedback from both boards and commissions placement, but also previous times of, of finding councilpeople, it's, we've actually been through this a bunch now between Kyle, Barbara, and Dietrich recently. So anyways, that was the only thing I wanted to add to it, is, is that we're thoughtful about that part of the process, but otherwise, I agree with the timing of, of mid, mid to late January to get through it all.
Councilmember Kern.
I have nothing to say, I just completely agree. I think we should just get the process started quickly, but then take our time and make sure we choose the right person.
Did you have something to add, Councilmember?
Yeah, I agree that having the deadline for the applications in January is reasonable because it gives time to get the word out and get good applicants. But in the meantime, we can have all of our process ready to go the day after the deadline for applications and just do the interviews and, and get it done quickly. So it's finished by the end of January.
So let me, let me try to sort of summarize a little bit. It sounds like from the discussion that the, or the, the timing that the clerk, Luther mentioned was acceptable. And I'm not sure we've quite fleshed out, I, I was joking, Councilmember Hefner, I, you, you and Councilmember Hamilton have just been through a fairly substantial culling of Boarding Commissions folks. I don't expect you to have to do this, too. I, I think that I am comfortable personally, and I'd like to hear any comment that people have, with delegating to two of us, the idea of getting the application cleaned up a little bit. I don't know whether we have to, do we have to come back to council with this? I guess the one thing that I would say, and I, is... I guess the one thing that I would say, and I, is that I know one thing that we, we did, we asked, well, it was a question that came up, so it may be a different animal, but, I mean, if there's something on the application relating to DEI, I think that deserves some thought. I would, I guess, request that the city manager talk with Ms. Miles, about manager Miles, about that. I also, I guess, would think it'd be a good idea, even in light of Councilmember Fahy's comment, to put the folks who will volunteer momentarily to put together some questions, too. We may as well do that now, and there's no reason not to have people do that. And frankly, you know, this is an area where if you've just answered the questions less than a year ago, the input could be helpful, but I'm not going to put that on. You all, I, do we have a couple of folks other than Councilmember Hefner and, and Councilmember Hamilton who'd be willing to look at the application, make any changes to it so it gets out soon, and then put together some, some questions? We will talk about the questions again, so that, that doesn't need to be completely final form, but I think that's what I would suggest, and if, do people agree with that? Or what do you think? All right, if we're going to do that, who would like to volunteer? Okay? That's one. Wow.
Who's to hang out with me for a little bit?
Okay. Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, both of y'all. And, ooh, there are only Ward 2 people. That could be a problem. We're, we're just gonna, yeah, we're just gonna have to, we're gonna have to extra careful review that when that comes. Anyway, thank you very much, and I think that, is that enough direction? All right, good, let's move on. The next part, I do not have the written document, but I do have and can go through, if you like, the, the folks, the assignments. I've talked to all, this is the one, there aren't very many prerogatives that are just there for the mayor to appoint or whatever, this is one of them, and I appreciate everybody's patience on this. I've spent a lot of time trying to sort of figure through things. I think the people that I've talked to sort of understand that process, because it's, there's a lot to do, and, and I'm trying to be fair, and there are a lot of considerations. And, you know, time considerations and interest considerations, trying to give people things that they like to do, in some cases, giving things that I think they will do well, even if they don't necessarily, or didn't necessarily prefer that. And part of that is, I ask of my fellow council members to, to try to have some faith in that. I know, and I'll mention this out loud, and hopefully it'll get back to former Mayor Stolzmann, that I remember being really upset about being pulled off of Finance Committee and put on LRC, and I made that clear to the mayor, and she explained what her decision was, and it was her decision, and it was, and I went away grumpy, but it was the right decision, and I'm really glad she did what she did. And I think she saw things that I didn't see at that time, and that's part of this, and there's a little trust involved, and I think, what I appreciate is really thoughtful comments from my fellow council members about what they wanted to do, what they, you know, didn't want to do, what, what they're willing to do, and I appreciate all that. So with that in mind, I can, and I'm not, let's see, the Economic Vitality Committee, at least for the moment, again, we are waiting, we will have another person join that, well, this is one where we'll have somebody join it, but Councilmember Dickinson has asked to chair that, to chair Economic Vitality. Again, he's coming back for a, wow, third, third rotation or third shift here. And Councilmember Fahy, and for a time, I mean, anybody can, of course, attend a meeting. I'm discouraging that to the extent that we've got a lot of other stuff, but, but there are some meetings like Finance that I think a lot of us go to, because it's really important, and we all know that. So, you know, what I'd say is, I know that Councilmember Kern has expressed an interest in Economic Vitality. Until we get somebody appointed, you're welcome to, to go to that and serve as a member of that. We can talk a little bit about how this is going to work. Finance, I have, or can I appoint Councilmember Hefner and Councilmember Kern and Councilmember Hamilton in that end to designate Councilmember Hefner as the chair. And that's the biennial budget, that's a new, it's going to be a heavy-duty assignment, and I've talked with everybody about that, because it's a big lift for staff, it's a big lift for us, there's going to be a scheduled file. All right. Next, Tara Communities for Climate Action will be Councilmember Fahy, and I would put the new Ward 1 person as an alternate for that. Commuting Solutions, the new person, I think I'll put on that as a primary. I, I don't know whether we need to have, well, no, you're, bear with me for a minute. I'm not, I'm not sure we need to be, hold on. Yeah, I don't know that we need to, to be necessarily appointing an alternate for that. I think, I'm sorry, I just like, lost my place here. Okay, so Consortium of Cities is next, and the primary on that, like Councilmember Fahy to be that person, their primary task, I think, this year is going to be looking at minimum wage issues. That'll be an interesting conversation. And then the, yeah, and so, gosh, I, I'm really sorry about this. You know what I'm going to do? Pardon me?
Meeting Solutions is the new person?
It's the new person, yeah. And, I mean, I'm almost wanting to just say, let's do this tomorrow, when I have all this written out, but, yeah, go ahead.
Committee of Solutions, they're having a legislative breakfast during January.
And that should be, yeah.
So I could, I could do the, I'm.
You want to cover that? Will you want to cover that?
Just until the new person's on?
Right, that's fine, I think that would be good. The DBA Street Fair Committee, be Councilmember Hamilton, and I don't think we need a alternate for that one, or I don't feel really compelled to do that. Pardon me? The Denver Regional Council of Governments, Councilmember Kern will be the primary on that, and Councilmember Hefner will be the alternate. Joint Issues is a kind of as-needed position, I'm going to point Councilmember Hamilton to that. I think that's kind of a work in progress, I think, because I don't think we need, you know, I don't think we need committees for, for, you know, we used to call it Lola, I think, Louisville, Lafayette, and then, I don't really like Superior Louisville, that doesn't sound okay, does it? But, you know, there's issues that'll come up. I think those issues will come up bubbling up from staff, frankly, and I think we can at that point haul in Councilmember Hamilton, and she'll be.
You have to haul me in?
Yeah, haul her in, and, you know, she can, what's that?
I can do that.
No. Yeah, I don't know that I put you in charge of that exactly. We'll have to think, it sounds like that's an item for negotiation. Do we have discussion direction? Anyway, and then Revitalization Commission, I'm going to stay on the Revitalization Commission, so. And then finally, the Roundtable, Councilmember Fahy is going to be the primary, and Councilmember Hamilton has graciously agreed to be the alternate on that. I think, the one thing I would say about that, I want to mention real quick, is that there is a change in the wind, I think, on those issues, and I think the change in the wind has to do a little bit with not focusing quite as much on the FAA strategy, but kind of a ground strategy of legislative and potentially, you know, Attorney General involvement in some of those issues. And I've talked with Councilmember Fahy at some length about the fact that that could be a lot more complicated than it's been in the past, of just going to a roundtable meeting and not really getting very far. So there's a, there's a couple of, there's a couple of kind of alternates that I've sort of elided here, and I'll, I will get back to you tomorrow, and I'll send you, I'll, I can send you out a chart, I just didn't get it all written out. And I think, I think we, the thing that occurred to me in doing this is we have one heck of a team. We really do. I, I feel like I've got an embarrassment of riches here, and that is a really good feeling, right? Because sometimes in the past, it's been like, oh my gosh, who's going to do this? We don't have anybody who's really qualified. We got, we got some ringers, so I'm excited about that, and I hope, I hope you guys will be, too. And I'd get a mulligan if, when we get, if we get a new person on board and everybody mutinies. It's just, you know, I really would like to shift, you know, I'll, I'll be open to that, and I'll say that right now, because this is my first time doing that. So, all right, next, Item H, which is Use Tax Exemption for Homes Damaged in Marshall Fire, first reading, not going to take any public comment on this. Ordinance number 1867, series 2023, and ordinance exempting construction materials from the city's use tax for building permits issued for reconstruction of homes damaged or destroyed in the Marshall Fire burn area. To set the public hearing for December 19th. Do we have a motion?
Did you move?
Pardon me?
You didn't move, I thought you moved.
I didn't.
I, I moved to approve ordinance number 1867, series 2023.
Good. Second?
Second.
Okay. Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good. Passes, and we'll go to ordinance number 1868, series 2023, and ordinance adopting by reference 2018 International Energy Conservation Code as an alternative for the barren rebuilding of homes that sustain smoke, heat, water, ash, or other damages result of the Marshall Fire. This is on first reading, to set the public hearing for the same date previous, December 19th, 2023. I move for the passage of that ordinance.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. City Attorney's Report.
Nothing from our office tonight.
Say again.
Nothing from our office tonight.
Okay, nothing tonight, all right. Council Comments, Committee Reports, Identification of Future Agenda Items, Councilmember Fahy.
I have one suggestion for a future agenda item, and that's to discuss the safety and, I guess, just the safety of young people on e-bikes and scooters, and, and adults as well, and the safety of the kids going to school, so that's what I would like.
Okay, others?
I absolutely support the concept, curious what form it would come from, from staff, but I think it's clearly a big issue, so I'm excited to have it, you know, informational or, or possible solutions or what have you.
Yeah, I think that's what, anybody else? Items, yes, go ahead.
Congrats for completing your first meeting.
I don't need to move to adjourn, I can just adjourn, and that's what we're going to do. Thank you.
You did it.